Let's call the meeting into order. We'll do that in an hour. I did something a little different this year, reached out to all the council members and sent them I'll send them an email stating what they like about the budget, what they want in, if there's something they want in, something they want out. So I got a list of things to go through of what I heard back from the council, rest of the council members. But I talked to Stephanie today and she wants to update a couple items on the agenda that she didn't get to go over, that they just found out about this week, or today.
Like me to go ahead and start?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Am I on? Okay, sorry. Okay, I did hand out on everybody's desk your council review sheet. Did I did add the numbers, so it should be easier to follow along what everybody's talking about. I wanted to start down, it would be the second to the last page, it says council review discussion items. And just a few items that either have come up since the budget meeting, that I just want to make sure council's aware of. The first three items, A, B, and C, we discussed those a little bit at the last meeting, so they're not new. Item D. What's that? Item D, so it'll be the second to the last page, and it says item, oh, sorry, last page.
Last page.
We've got too many pages here.
That's why, the last page is blank, okay, sorry.
Oh, mine's not blank.
Last page, it should show.
Next one.
Item number D, so this is an item that's on the agenda for tonight's meeting, so I'm just gonna call it to your attention. It is not currently listed in the proposed budget, and it's not listed on our capital list. So this is a new building at where the ground storage tank is. It'd be used for equipment storage and material storage as well, and vehicles and things like that. Joe will talk about it more during the council meeting, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention, that it's not currently in the budget. So if it's approved, the design is approved at tonight's city council meeting, I will add that into the budget, and it will come out of the water fund. So it's not gonna affect anything we're doing in general fund, I just wanted to point it out because it's not currently included in the budget. Item number E, I was asked by one of the city councilors, and now I can't remember who it was, if we had looked at what the cost of operating the second station would be. I did take what the cost is now that we pay for the public safety building and utilities and foam, and showed that for you as well. So forty-six thousand six hundred in utilities annually. We do not have that budgeted for 2026, but it would not be constructed or completed in 2026, so that would be a future cost. Another thing that's on tonight's agenda is council will be asked to make a decision on the intersection at 23rd and Olmen. This was discussed at the last budget work session. We put some numbers to what the potential cost increases were. We also had to add costs for sidewalks that we weren't showing out of the general fund before. So I just wanted to show you four different options of what that potential cost increase to the general fund could be for this project. If, you can see on line F, if you do the roundabout and the city covers the cost of the sidewalk, the cost increase would be seven hundred and fifteen thousand one forty-five. If item, or line G, if you did the roundabout and you assess the sidewalk like we do all of our other projects, the cost increase to the city general fund would be six hundred and fifteen thousand three ninety-five.
Someone said the front door's locked.
There shouldn't be, I unlocked them. Actually, Andrew's undoing it right now, so I can see him on the other monitor making sure it's unlocked.
Wouldn't we be assessing two sides of that to ourselves?
I can answer that.
Yeah.
We don't plan on putting sidewalk currently on the west side. Obviously, the sidewalk around the roundabout, the city's gonna cover, this would just be the sidewalk adjacent to the properties on the east side.
Oh, because it's a roundabout, I see.
Yep. So line H would be increased general fund cost if we don't do the roundabout, but the city covers the cost of the sidewalk, would increase general fund two sixty-five, five fifty. And then line number I, the increased general fund cost, that's if we don't do the roundabout, but we have the sidewalk assessed, the city's still gonna have to increase the general fund contribution to this project, a hundred and sixty-five thousand eight hundred dollars. Now, if council, you know, you have this for consideration at tonight's meeting, this is just tonight's regular city council meeting. This is just to show you what that cost impact could be to the budget. The last item, item J, now we know Lake Mitchell is not being drawn down in 2025, so I can say that we know there's not gonna be a debt service payment that we'll have to do in 2026. If council decides to move forward with the roundabout, you could take the offsetting amount off of what we had budgeted for the first debt service payment for the lake.
What was that amount, do you remember?
About one point two million dollars. So, however, out of that one point two, you're also probably, if you move forward with the study on the dam, you'll wanna take the cost out of that, so I did also, this is a very rough estimate, Joe's hasn't got a lot of firm quotes in from people yet, but we think maybe a worst-case scenario would be two hundred thousand dollars next year to do that dam study. Go ahead.
Can we turn your mic on, Tom, on, please?
Item F.
Yep.
Increase cost of the sidewalk included, seven hundred fifteen on top of the nine fifteen to do the roundabout, was that?
No, this is completely separate, this is in addition to what we already have budgeted, so when.
We haven't budgeted anything for roundabout versus a stoplight.
We just had a budget for the project. So if we do the roundabout, that's your cost increase for the roundabout. If you don't do the roundabout, you're looking at H and I, we're gonna have to do one of those two things. Either way, we're gonna have a cost increase to general fund to do the project. If you do the roundabout, that cost increase will be higher. You can see that.
And roundabouts were nine hundred and fifteen? Joe?
So the numbers we talked about last time were high level. These, ESPN went in and worked it, and these are the new estimates. After they've reviewed, they've had more time to, more detailed looked into the estimates, so this is the revised estimate. So when you say nine fifteen, we're now, or nine fifty or whatever it was, we're now at seven fifteen.
Sidewalks included.
That's if the city paid for the sidewalk, correct?
Correct. Nice, just to sort out any confusion there might be, there is an eight-foot sidewalk that's gonna be installed on the east side. If we assessed, we would only assess five feet, like we would anywhere else in town. Just wanna clarify that, so there's no confusion.
Are, what homes are there, there on the east side that would be assessed, would it go all the way down? Where, I mean, who's being assessed, I'm trying to think what homes we have in that area of the roundabout that would be assessed.
So it'd be all the adjacent property owners in between to the road from 23rd to Kemper, where we would meet that sidewalk.
So I would like to answer a question here, Mike's question was about the city's cost increase. The cost increase on those H and I are regardless of how you do the intersection, we have to pay that because there's some city costs for the sidewalk. Yeah, so we're gonna have some general fund costs either way that we're gonna have to increase our budget. If you do the roundabout, that cost will be higher.
I have a question, so there was three options before, roundabout, light, and stop sign, there's only two options here, so can you explain that, Joe?
Yeah, the options are for a roundabout or staying in stop signs.
Okay, so lights are not included in this?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, because the traffic, the traffic study recommended either the stop sign, the two stops like we have now, and in the future, it would go to a four-way stop, or we could consider doing the roundabout now. That was the recommendation from the transportation study.
Okay.
So, and then, I think I already mentioned it, but item number J was, yeah, I did say it, the maximum cost that we're kinda thinking you might see for a study on the Lake Mitchell Dam would be two hundred thousand dollars. So I'm just making sure I'm sharing this with you, so that you keep this in mind as we go through the other budget discussions, because these items would be changes to what we've already discussed. Okay.
Who does studies, like somebody in South Dakota, or you gotta get somebody from out of state, or how's that work?
So.
Talking lake studies, or the?
Talking about the dam study.
Okay. I thought you were talking traffic.
So HDR Engineering, that does our wastewater, they have a group that does these. Houston Engineering, who was previously FIRA, they have an office out of Sioux Falls, they have a group that does these. Those are two good firms that I've reached out to, and then we're also requesting a proposal from BAR as well.
Joe, why are we having to do the additional two hundred thousand, wouldn't that be in the BAR's engineering umbrella of work?
So right now, do you wanna wait to get into that at the council meeting?
I would say that we do have this listed for discussion at the city council meeting, and they're gonna specifically talk about this study and why the city has to do it, so since it's a listed agenda item for tonight's action, I would say we should probably move discussion to that in case anyone from the public is coming to hear that.
Beautiful idea.
Yeah. I just, I know I didn't, my bad. You are correct. But I wanted to make sure that you at least are aware of that whatever decisions you guys make tonight during the city council meeting, those items aren't currently factored in, so you kind of just have that in the back of your minds. But you are right, John, I brought it up. Okay, and that's all I had for, oh, I do have one other update, and that would be the last item shown. This is also on the city council agenda for tonight, it's shown as item number L on your council discussion items. We did finally get the final property tax growth numbers, as of today, we know these are the final. So the growth was at one point five two percent. That revenue increase for us will be a hundred and two thousand five hundred and six dollars in property taxes. I think I told you guys, it's typically about a hundred thousand dollars with growth, so we're right on the average of where we normally see that number come in. And that also is not included, so that would be new revenue for the budget when we get to the final budget numbers. And that's all I had, Kevin.
Okay. I'll start through the list that I got, the different people sent around to me, stuff they wanted added, or that they didn't want added in. Quite a few people went to the Corn Palace Plaza, and I think we had seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars assigned for that. And three or four people reached out and said that they'd like to take five hundred out and leave two fifty in, I don't know if we wanna discuss that, or how we wanna go about that.
Say that again?
Cut it down to two fifty, instead of seven fifty.
So the total project would be two fifty?
Yeah.
Well, no, because part of that, we have money already earmarked for this project, correct, or set aside for that?
Well, you have money earmarked in entertainment tax reserves that is for Corn Palace improvements, it's not for the plaza itself. You have a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that was, that is specifically earmarked for plaza expansion due to the sale of a property, or two sales of property that were dedicated for that purpose.
One of the other things that we had talked about, Stephanie, was that since we have finished the streetscape, we have that money that we've earmarked for the past however many years that we have been applying to those intersections. Now that we've completed that, could we apply that same money to this project?
Well, so the bid tax is complete, I mean, what the bid tax was paying for, for me, for the bump outs is done. So now it's up to the bid board to determine how they wanna use those funds. As far as the entertainment tax funds, that's exactly what this is, is that is the funding that we've set aside each year for community project improvements, so seven hundred and fifty.
The seven, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
And that's what's currently budgeted this year, but when we had the proposal come in at one point two million dollars, council said you didn't wanna move forward at that cost. So that's the same amount that's budgeted in 2025, just wanting to see where council wants to move forward, if at all, with that project.
I, I'm reticent about, like, backing it off to two fifty, that seems like a pretty significant chunk in it, and that money is money that's specifically for this very kind of a project. I was talking to Jeff, and I was saying, you know, when I go to a place that has a resort, and there, it's a place that people gather, there are always things to do, there are things that give children an opportunity to get involved, and it makes families stay. And I was telling him that I was traveling, and someone found out that I was from where the Corn Palace is, and they said, oh, we come there every year. In fact, we bring our grandkids, and they said, we're really disappointed that they don't have that little museum that they had for a while up in the upper area for our grandkids, they love that. What do you have for kids, and I'm like, you know what, we're working on it. So this would be that element that makes it a place that families, I mean, we have lots of things that are interesting for adults, but this would be something that would make it so that a family would have something to do that would let them, you know, the kids can blow off some steam, and they could get involved, and they could play around, and I just think that this is a really important project, so I would rather that we didn't back that. If that was, if this was money that was coming from the general fund, not that all of our funds aren't important, but that money is money that's been earmarked for completing that downtown that we've been using for all these years. Let's finish, let's get this done, let's, let's keep, I'd like to see us keep, I'd like to see us keep the full seven fifty.
So Tim, can you answer your question, currently in entertainment tax, you have six hundred thousand dollars that is designated for capital improvements, facilities. Then we have the hundred thousand dollars, which was specifically for the plaza expansion, and another ten thousand five sixty-eight was towards the improvements on Main Street.
So I think part of, I think we all, most of us agree that the parking lot over there needs to disappear, and something needs to be done in that area. My concern I have with is the two hundred fifty thousand, with numbers that we know today that we're getting for other projects that we've done, what do we really get for two hundred fifty thousand? Is there gonna be anything that's actually of an improvement over there that's gonna be a good vested interest, and not another slap in the face? I'm just concerned about that number being too low to get some good result of some kind of improvement over there. And I'm not saying maybe seven fifty's it, but from numbers that we've been seeing for anything else we're doing around this town, it just seems like that doesn't really get us a lot, it's a lot of money, but it just seems like we don't get a whole lot for that kind of money, it just.
What, what are we getting?
I wanna make sure we get a good improvement, is what I'm trying to get at.
What are we getting for seven fifty?
So basically, for the seven hundred and fifty, I took the one point two of the original proposal, took out the playground features, the water feature, and the, and the adult swings, which would allow you to do some type of a greenscape in the original area without features added to it.
Do you think the architect would, like, dial it back and give us a couple, like, good, better bests, and then we can make a, because right now, we have no idea what we would get for any amount of money.
But before we get to that point, I don't, so here's the problem. You need to give boundaries at what you're willing to spend on the project, because I don't wanna go in through the cost of design again to just have it turned down.
Right, and that's where I think we need to earmark a number, if it's two fifty, then I guess they'll have to give us a design for two hundred fifty thousand. I don't think we're gonna like it, it's probably still gonna be a parking lot. The other option, if it's five hundred or seven fifty, then you're right, give us, give us some options of what we can do for five hundred, or seven fifty, or six hundred, or whatever that number is, I'm just really concerned that two fifty isn't gonna get us anything, and we're gonna keep it a parking lot, which I am not impressed with.
So for comparison, I guess in this year's budget, we budgeted eighty thousand dollars for parking lot construction, per parking lot.
So I think one of the hopes that I had was that, I know that some people had talked about bringing this number down, but since we have a hundred thousand dollars that we already have earmarked for this project, which I assume is not a part of this budget at this point.
No, it is.
It is?
Yep, it's shown as revenue applied towards that project.
Okay. So I would still like to keep it closer, I would, I would be okay with moving it down to five hundred thousand total as far as budget implication goes, but I still think that some of the features that I would love to see in there, some kind of shaded structure for events out there that can come up and down depending on need, so we don't block the view of the plaza, but as we have events, we could quickly put things up and take them down, and then also more green space on the plaza itself and remove the parking lot, and so I don't think those two projects as a part of the overall scheme of things are going to be less than five hundred thousand dollars.
I think to have any impact at all, we're gonna need to keep it at the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we're not sacrificing anything else, are we sacrificing anything else by doing that seven fifty?
By not doing seven fifty, you're just adding money to the entertainment tax reserves unless council has an intended use for that, that, you know, I'm not, that's not currently included.
So we're not choosing this over something else, this is money that we have that has been earmarked. I'd like to see us keep it there so that we can make an impact, I think otherwise, we're gonna be, it won't be great.
So is the rest of the council, they wanna stick at seven fifty, or go to five hundred, I'm just taking here whatever wants, has to say here.
Time out a second here, so we're talking about five hundred thousand dollars worth of green space? Because we're taking the water feature out, we're taking the playset out, so what else are we gonna put in there?
Removals of the parking lot conditions, I would assume you'd be adding some of the fencing in that was shown in the original design to kind of section off the area. Green space, if it's gonna be a children's play area, the original design had a specific kind of turf that's used on, like, playground surfaces. I don't know, I guess that would be up to what the landscape architect brings back.
Right.
I mean, Mike, you're exactly right, if we take, if we lower it to two hundred and fifty thousand, we're not gonna get much more than a green space, we'll be lucky to get that.
Right, but if we, let's say the five hundred number, because I'm hearing it echo a few times, if we go to five hundred, that would be something that we could have them draw us up options to consider for roughly five hundred grand, if we so wanna budget that amount.
Yeah, and are we just talking about the original, like, the new part that we played where the scoreboard was? Or are we talking about that plus the extension to the east that was shown by the committee? Just for clarification.
Well, and my personal priority is the parking lot, right, where we have the old scoreboard at. Now, how far it can go to the east will be determined by five hundred thousand, but the main focal point that tourists are literally walking by and standing in needs to be revised. So determination of how far it can go east, I think is that dollar amount of what they can do for that amount, but I just need the parking lot outside of Bradley's to disappear, and I, I don't know where the Bradley's are on, but I'm assuming they probably like that disappeared also. So, and not that this is about them, but, you know, it's a whole package deal that we wanted to improve the Corn Palace Plaza area, Corn Palace Plaza area, so.
I was gonna just comment on that, Marty, is, to me, the safety issue was a concern, and I talked to both Jason and Jen, and they're just saying, we're just holding our breath until that parking lot to the north of them gets out of there, because, you know, there are people standing there viewing like we want for a plaza, and why there's a parking lot is just dumbfounding. But I, I think at a minimum, that's where I was at when I got ahold of Kevin, I says, I want that parking lot out of there, and if we just have to turn it to grass or whatever at this point in time, then so be it, and then if we want to put other features in there, then that's up for discussion. But in reality, I don't think we're going to hold back on anything if we just do that as a first project, and then try to go forward with the possibility of now what do we wanna add, and how far east do we go? That's where I was at at this point in time, is just saying that, that the parking lot, let's, let's just convert it and make it safer. And then from there, then if we wanna design something, and, or try to find, you know, other features or something for, and I agree, there, I think it'd be nice for children to have something to do when they come down here. And it would be used, I'm pretty sure of that, both tourists and local families would, would use it. But that, to me, that's a minimum, and that's, that's where, and I don't know what it would cost to eliminate the parking lot and put it to green, and I know you can't come up with a number tonight, but that's really where I'm at at this point, and that we can discuss the others as it increases.
And I think one of the things that, the reason that we took away parking spots out of that other lot that wasn't where the scoreboard was, was to make room for the water feature and then the benches, but if we're taking both of those things out, I don't think you need to take away those parking spots on the. I don't think you need to take away those parking spots on the east side of, or the west.
East.
East. Yeah, I was right. Okay, east, um east side. And so I think the project costs will come down a little bit from that as well. Um because if you're not having the benches there, you're not having the water feature there, then the need for those spots to go away as a function of the use of the space, I don't think becomes as prevalent.
And for context, just so what I said in one of those plaza expansion things, and I feel like for that one point two million, it was like everything everyone put in for a wish list kinda added to that. So you should be able to dial quite a bit of that back.
And this isn't, it's in stone. This is just recommendations because this is just the beginning of our budget here.
So are we at two fifty still? Or, cause I mean, I've heard two fifty and I've heard five hundred. I just want direction one way or another.
I'm at five.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Something. I need some kind of direction.
I'm okay with tearing out the parking lot. I'm okay with tearing out the parking lot if that's all we do. If we're gonna go forward, to me, the most important part is to get it wider in the east end. So when you have music down there, people can spread out. Um we got some trees that are maple trees that are gonna be blocking the murals. Um I think they're leaving them in. But um to me, that's a huge part of the project is to get it wider, take that spot out, use the food trucks on the south side. The north side gets tore out. So yeah, if we're not gonna do that, then I'm okay with just doing the parking lot out and grass. Otherwise, I think we need to widen it and do what, I was on that when I was with Mitchell Main Street Beyond. And uh, you know, I mean, my personal opinion, landscaping over there is absolutely horrible. Um this is in the plaza. This is my personal opinion. Five times too many plants. Get me on a roll here. Um I think you could let some pheasants out there and make it hunt them. The bushes are laying down, the snow sits on them. Um I don't like it. But that's the guy that designs, the over, the overspend. I drive by every place. The engineers and designers do it. There's five times too many plants. I drive by every house. Their landscape, perfect. Personal opinion. Um we got drains in the middle of the thing. We got drains in the middle of the alley. We got drains in the middle of the plaza.
Part of that was, so I'm just gonna remind everybody, part of that design for the one point two is moving the storm drainage out of that middle area. Part of the reason.
That they put in.
Yeah. Well, they had to be.
Same guy is designing the next one. That's my whole point.
They had to be put in. They were already existing.
But now, after we had that discussion, he's already taken them off.
And then the other thing is the reason why they were moving um, when the fence got moved to the south a little bit, it was allowing us to remove all that low growth sumac, put in the boardwalk so you could have seating under the shaded trees there. So that was part of the function of that.
Was the rock garden and the drain in the parking lot, which he said the streets comes from Fifth Street, brings down the alley. Well, you gotta go up a foot to get to the parking lot. And that's where we got one of our.
Well, the parking lot was city designed.
Yep, sorry. But no, the uh, that rock garden, I said, we had to push a car out, backed into it, snow this winter. Um I didn't like the whole design to start with, but uh.
So I think what I've heard is Tim, Marty, Susan at five hundred, two fifty for Kevin. Where were you at, Dan?
Pick a number, Dan.
Just pick a number so I know which way.
Pick your number.
I'm gonna go with the two fifty and just do the grass. Um and then when we can do the project correctly. Otherwise, five hundred and seven fifty, I don't think we're gonna get the project done. I haven't seen the design. I mean, we're given a dollar figure without a design.
Is it possible to carry over some of the money from this time?
That is what this is proposing.
Right. But I'm, I'm saying like if we don't do it all this year, carry over, like if we did the two hundred and fifty, we just did the green space.
So if, if you only spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the money will just be sitting in the entertainment tax fund for council to decide how you guys wanna use it.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get direction so I can update the budget documents.
If we have over a hundred thousand, put aside to it. Does that make it three fifty or does that come?
No, it's part of the two fifty. So then I'm gonna leave it at two fifty because I've only heard two. No, I've heard, so I've heard three for five hundred and two for two fifty.
Um I, you know what, two fifty.
Two fifty. Okay, now you're three and three. I need direction.
Okay, who's left? We're gonna move on. We're thirty minutes into this and we're on topic one.
I, I like the idea of just being green space, but more of a mound. A hill that, you know, I went to Florida and that's, they had nothing but grass. But there was hills and the kids and I just see people setting a blanket up on there and watching a concert. So I'm gonna say the five hundred.
In a playground structure, really nice ones like a hundred and fifty thousand. So we wanted to do bare bones, you get grass in playground structure?
Jeff?
Yeah, what's your number, Jeff?
You can make it back to four four.
Well, to be quite honest with you, just as, as um as Stephanie has said, it stays in the entertainment fund until we're ready to spend it. I, I wouldn't mind seeing a five hundred thousand dollar option, but in reality, if I don't like it, I'm, I'm just going back to just let's get rid of the parking lot and, and let's put the green grass in there. If, I mean, if it looks like we're overspending for something, then, but that's fine. Five hundred's fine.
I just need direction so that when we start looking at this, we know where.
But in reality, I'm with Dan. How, how do you put a dollar amount on it with not knowing what you're gonna get?
Because we can't start a plan at all if we don't know what the dollar limit is that council's gonna give it. We did that already.
We did that with everything. We just pick a number and then go spend it.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with, with moving up to the five hundred to see what we could get, but in reality, um.
It still will come to you.
It's gonna come back to us and I, and I'm, uh at a minimum, we just need to get rid of that parking lot and then we can see what else we wanna include.
Okay. Do you have your direction you need?
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Next. Quite, quite a few people replied back at the fire station to lower it a million dollars and keep one and a half million dollars in.
Can I ask this question first, Stephanie? What do we have in the reserve funds, first of all?
Sure.
And cause that, cause that's where this was being proposed or not?
Correct. And that was listed on the, we went through that in the cash available. So right now you have five point seven, five million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the future capital projects fund. Um the reason why I, we kinda changed from one point two to two point five is since it's coming out of this fund, you can show it as earmarked so we know that that project is fully funded so we can start with the design and move forward. Um you obviously wouldn't need the cash until you do the project. But showing the project fully funded would know that, then we know we're moving forward with the project. And this future capital project line doesn't get allocated for something else.
Cause I had quite a few people put that down on there.
Cause that is not being paid out of current cash. That's coming out of the reserve.
Okay, Joe, I have a question. The building at the airport on Highway thirty seven is used for equipment storage? That's correct. There's no way we can build a basic building for equipment storage and make that our new fire hall?
To do that, you would have to add in the living quarters and the improvements similar to what we looked at at the existing metal building at the water treatment facility. Because it's not a matter, what we have there at the airport now doesn't qualify as a second fire station. It would have to be heated. You have to be able to have this four staff um dormed there. So they have to have their living quarters. Um I think they were estimating eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for us to renovate the one by the late um, the water treatment plant and the one out at the airport is much smaller. It's half, less than half the size.
That's a pretty small building.
So what are we putting in there? One fire truck, one ambulance, four people?
And a grass rig. So one fire truck, one ambulance, one grass rig, and then four people.
And they would probably have the rescue boat there too, I would assume.
Oh, and the boat, yep.
Yeah. Since it's closer to the lake.
I just look at that building and I say, what a nice building. And we're just using it for storage. It looks like a fire. And I mean, I've never been in it. I'm actually gonna, gonna email Jordan today and say, let's tour that.
I almost, I almost stopped in there just to see it myself. That's like one of the only buildings I haven't been in yet.
Yes, you, you are rather rough of it, I guess.
No, so there, well, there's two separate buildings that people think are the fire station. Our second fire station's way in the back by the Fisher Building. That's the sec, but the one you're talking about is the one you can see from the road. That's an actual airport building. Right. But that's not a fire station, right, Joe? Or is that the airport fire station?
So I'm not for certain, but I'm, I think that used to be the old fire station when we had commercial service at the airport. That was a requirement.
There used to be a fire truck out there one time.
Um I'm sure standards have changed quite a bit since then.
Fire station.
On Highway thirty seven. Yeah, but no longer. That's only.
No, right now we use it for our airport equipment storage. Um there is, I think the reason it looks so large is there's an office space that is large and then there's a conference room because of what it used to be used for. Um now we have um our airport supervisor located there. Um we have the other building that stores our snow equipment um that's heated. So yeah, I, I, I think the building that is out there would need extensive renovation in order to fit what the um fire department needs now.
And then we'd have to find somewhere to put all that stuff, right?
Well, I think we would have to, you also, Justin can maybe correct me if I'm wrong here, but we'd also have to get permission from FAA to get it approved as a non-airport use. Cause that's a big deal for FAA.
And then the other comment that I would make is when we were discussing, discussing the locations for the fire station, um the previous chief liked this location because it's easier for them to access all areas of town versus just, you know, kind of where it's back in that corner.
Okay, so what's, what are people thinking? Cause I had quite a few people say, take a million dollars out of that.
So one of the spots that I'm at, I'm, I'm glad we're, I mean, we've been talking about this for quite some time, obviously, and I'm glad we're actually putting on the, the front burner for a change. Um obviously, we have so many projects that go around in town. Uh I'm about wanting to lease earmarks for money. I don't know if it's divided in half, obviously with pricing changing, if we're not gonna do this next year. Maybe it's three years at a million to get to a higher number. That could be, I know we all know, and to get into our final phase of things, there's more things that get added to it, more projects also giving um the department more time to get ready that they're actually at the forefront of being serious about this instead of talking about it on a yearly basis as we have. So I'm not for the whole project next year. I'm, I'm in phase at it. If it's the one point two five for two years or if it's a million for the next three years, but something to get in the kitty to get, make sure this does happen.
I, I agree with you, Marty. I, you know, obviously we have been talking about it a long time and it's glad that we are talking about it now seriously. Um and, and just, you know, Mike brings up a good, good comment and Joe's followed up with some very good comments too. And you know, I, I think maybe we're still searching a little bit, but if, if we start to put money off to the side, people know we're serious about putting it out there and, and maybe trying to get a, a better design or possibility or whatever the case may be, then um I, I'm all for putting a million in this year. And uh, and then at that point, they, we, we know we're on, on task and, and eventually we'll, we'll get the fire station. But to bite that off in one chunk and take it out of reserves is, is quite large. So I, I'm, I would be in favor of the million. I don't know if anybody else would.
I agree.
So what would the benefit of waiting be?
We wouldn't take as much out of our cash reserves.
Okay.
Just to be clear, the, the money wouldn't be spent out of reserves until the construction happened. But it's just showing that that's how it would be funded. So if council's wanting to switch that and make that come out of current cash, you're gonna have to cut the one point two million dollars of other projects to make it come out of current cash.
Right. And I don't know where you're at, Marty, but I was thinking taking a thou, a million out of the reserves.
Correct.
And put, and, and earmarking it and reserving it.
Right. And I don't know if the proper word of benefit would be the proper word to use, Mr. Mayor. It's just the fact that we are making a very positive, you know, step forward, I guess, that hey, this is something we need to do. We know we need it out there in that side of the um of the areas. Obviously, you live out there. It's, it's an area that we need to get some more um fire protection out there. So I mean, that's what I'm sort of getting at. Hey, that instead of talking about it for last, I don't know how many years, we're actually moving forefront by putting something together. So we do have a plan that is a place. This just came together again with some more options. And you're right, now that we show the people in the public or other entities that we're doing this, we might get some other options or digging in the location that Mike just brought up. It's just the fact that we are putting money in the coffin for a change instead of just talking about it. That's where I'm sort of at with a million.
I would go along with the million. Uh one reason why, I think we should be, I've said this a bunch of times, the construction costs have changed in our, in our favor, I feel. And I, I would like to see we get a plan together if we decide to build a new one and, and move it forward. Not with just a million dollars and do it in one, like, like I think what Jordan's getting at, why are we setting this aside if we're not gonna do it? But.
Would it be safe to say if we just put a million, we will not start construction in twenty six?
Correct.
Right. So you're gonna put us back?
Because um so the plan was that you would budget for the entire project. The two point five was supposed to include the design of the project. And by having the funding authorized, if you could finish design in twenty twenty six, then you could go to bid in the fall with construction in twenty six to twenty seven. I think I covered that.
So Joe, real quick, in, in the location you're talking, it's between the highway and those two storage tanks that have the lids on?
Correct.
Okay, there's no piping or anything we're gonna run into that's gonna be a very expensive remove?
No.
Good.
Yeah, we'll have to put a lot, a lot of fill there, I would imagine.
I'd be in favor of the million also.
So I, just to be clear, that means, I just wanna make sure everyone's on the same page. You're doing the design in twenty six and you will not go to bid until twenty seven because you will not have funding authorized. Just wanna make sure everyone knows that.
Okay, next. Next, this is unanimous by everybody. Uh they wanna take the three studies out, fifty, fifty and ten thousand.
Oh, well, so two studies and then the city council thing. And I, when I sent that to Kevin, one of the things for the city council, uh student council uh initiative that you brought forward, Mayor, is I don't necessarily hate the idea, but I hate the idea of pigeonholing them to ten thousand dollars. That the student council could come up with something much better um that costs more than ten thousand dollars. And as a part of that process, um I don't want to them to, to be discouraged because things cost money. Um and so if they have a really good idea, I would love for them to bring that to council and us to consider that at that time, if that makes sense. Um and so that was, that was my thought process in removing it is that um if you give them a ten thousand dollar number, that's the, that's the number your project can be, no more, no less. And so some things that maybe they want cheaper, maybe they want something better that's more expensive that we wouldn't think about. That was just where I was at.
So I just wanna make sure um Mr. McCarterall said this is unanimous from board. I wanna make sure.
People I heard from, that was six people.
Yeah, it's not unanimous because I.
I didn't hear from Mike.
Yeah, I did. We didn't talk about it. To me, we talked about other things, we didn't talk about that. Uh I do like the retail strategy thing and the economic study. Uh I think we need an update, I guess. The retail strategies, I look at it, the way I understood it is explained to me. Uh we land one business, even if we don't land this, we get our name out there, two businesses, it's worth it. Do you wanna cut it?
Yeah, Mike's the only one I didn't hear from on that one.
I really do like the fact of reaching out to the student council and getting them involved in the community and, and as Tim says, I don't wanna deter them. And if we put some more funds in the contingency and they come up with something next year, we then hopefully have the money to possibly pay for it. So just to get the dial-up going, I think is a great idea. Uh the money thing, let's get, to me, let's get, not get hung up on it. Let's give them an opportunity and then come back with possible project. And then maybe even to the, to the point where next year, where the budget hearings, as we're walking through this, we might have a proposal from them saying this is what they would like to see coming up. No, it's, I like the idea. Hopefully we, they, they're willing to meet and, and do whatever and um I'm sure it's not monthly, but at least they've got some direction that they've got some input for, for the community that hopefully we can keep them here.
Did you say you had some conversation with somebody over there, Mayor?
Yeah, Dr. Childs.
Okay. Cause that was, this is one that I could have gotten on board as a former student council. President for a couple of years there. I was like, well, hey, this is sort of, sort of cool. But I see you're saying Jeff is, you know, doing it sort of the opposite direction of maybe they can propose a couple of projects they'd be interested in and, and working with us. And if it's not necessarily at budget to it, it might be something that could be a contingency item depending on the overall cost of it, you know, of something we could maybe do during the midseason too. I think it would be nice to get involved with them also as our future leaders.
All right, so move on to the next one. Uh Hitscock Park Parking Lot. A lot of people wanted to see if they could do that, make that more.
Do you have a line number for me, please?
Uh I don't. Ninety thousand.
What? I'm sorry.
The one that was ninety thousand.
No, one seventy nine.
Was that what it is?
She's like, I don't think my spreadsheet went to ninety thousand.
Line number. I don't have, I just wrote them on a piece of paper right there.
This is the parking lot on what we just bought?
On First Street.
It is not seventy nine. One seventy nine.
I got ninety. One seventy nine.
She's there, so what's the?
And uh. The feedback I received from people was that the parking lot is never full except for Arch of the Park. That's probably the only time. The swimming pool parking lot's full and they thought they'd like to see it probably maybe developed into a duplex. Housing, whatever. That's the feedback that I received from people.
Have you gotten any RFPs for that area?
No, we haven't. And it's closed, so now we have to start going after, being a little more aggressive and intentional and finding people.
And so one of my thoughts was until we know what all that space looks like, uh, I don't want to think about developing. Uh, I would love to see plans for what we can develop out there before we, uh, dedicate space to parking and what that might need or what. Makes sense for that area.
I'm with Tim on this. Um, I think we should let the developers' plans come through. And maybe there's something that's instead of spending the money, um, you know, level it, gravel it. And then let's let the plans and maybe there's gonna be some nice development there. I do like the idea of the parking lot for the view of the pool. Shows off her pool from First Street. Could be the negative to that, but I think we need to wait a year with paving in any way to, uh. In case somebody does come up plans, we don't waste the money.
I had that on there twice. That's funny.
I, I'm glad we're talking about it. That was one of the best buys we've ever had in the city of Mitchell, as far as I'm concerned. So. It, and in reality is, is maybe at best use is a parking lot, but maybe it's housing. And at this point in time, it's probably too new to try to, uh, put money into it. So in my mind, let's raise it and get it level. And then, uh, maybe in a year, we might have a clearer picture. Uh, so that was the reason I sent to Kevin that let's just. Not that it maybe shouldn't be a parking lot, let's just hold off until we get the best use. And so that was my thought process with it.
Just move to the next one. Oh, Dan, talk about the golf course.
This would not be a cut, it would be an add. One thing I like to do is. One thing I'd like to do is add the, the uh, phase three back in. Did some research on it. Um, it's, it's a lot of money. Um, golf course is booming right now. Uh, I'll refresh people on rounds, you know, we did. Since COVID, you know, we did twenty four, twenty four and twenty five thousand rounds, twenty three. Last year it jumped to thirty seven rounds. Thirty seven thousand, I'm sorry. This year we're ahead of the pace. Depends upon the weather, the last. We'll be ahead of the pace if the weather holds out. Rounds are up, you know, a third. Um, income, now these are off of our, um, finance statement. They're unaudited, I did say, um, roughly in, in twenty one. My figures are five forty thousand and then five forty nine in twenty two. Six oh two, it goes up. It goes up fifty three thousand in twenty three. They went up to six ninety five. Like in, in nine, in twenty four, so up about ninety three thousand. And this year we're. We're not done. You get rain with the rest of this week and you drop a lot of money, but we're, we're up somewhere around seventy five thousand plus on money. Um, we do have a two hundred fifty thousand dollar, um, pledge that. Uh, we could lose after this year. Um, I would like to capitalize on that and, and. Probably, I, I, I worked on it a little bit. I was out of town today. Two hundred fifty thousand dollars more out of the golf course and, uh, I could have that done out of our reserves. I let Stephanie make sure I don't say some wrong numbers here, cause I didn't get to, to meet with her. But, um, I think it's a. The big thing in phase three is that five greens for kids golf with the, with the amount of, of uh, play we're getting. The, uh, the five hole practice course would be.
Can people in the audience take your conversation outside? I'm having trouble hearing.
Um, I thought you were gonna say my numbers are all wrong.
Not yet.
Yeah, that's coming up. Now you're making back in time to confirm these. So, uh, he would give a place for practice. Uh, I went out for league last week and the high school was there. And league starts at five thirty, high school's not done. There's fifty people on the practice green. So league members, they stay aside. Uh, the five hole practice course would be to the north where the bowling green was and then all the way, you know, you know. We go all the way north up to Kippus and then, and east. Um, it'd just be a huge deal for our kids. Um, you know, I just think it's, it's a great, be a great deal for, for Lakeview for practice, for to get on the course, father, son come out. Um, and with the donor. I got it confirmed, it's, it's backed, so, uh, um, I think, I think we need to move forward on this. And I know it's, you gotta go to the bed and then it's the next year and, uh, it'd be a great thing for Lakeview.
So two things. First, Dan, are you just talking about the two fifty that's already earmarked in res- general fund, I mean. Golf fund reserves for this? Okay, then yes, I agree. Um, just to make sure.
So that's not a donation, that's just money.
No, you're saying the two hundred and fifty out of golf fund reserves and then you have matching funds of another two hundred and fifty. So five hundred thousand really of cash coming in, the difference. Um, would have to come from general fund then.
Correct.
So you would need the million dollars to come from general fund.
Correct.
Oh wait, I'm on the wrong line.
Somehow.
I'm on the wrong line. My bad.
It's one point three three million. It was one point five, but it's on here as one point three on the, the first one you gave me last week.
Thirty eight, yeah, thirty eight, I think Mike said.
It says one million three hundred and thirty thousand. He had another seventy thousand dollars for cart paths.
That got taken out on last.
Both of them are out.
Yeah, so that seventy thousand can be used, so.
So I'll jump in here and explain why I didn't put it in there, cause one, we, we had someone that was thankfully just bought in the other golf course in town. And made a big investment, so I'd just be afraid to compete with a private enterprise. It's, it would be scary if I was someone that just put that kind of money into the golf course. Uh, the second reason was it's an enterprise fund. Technically it's supposed to be self-sufficient. Uh. And I think if it's booming, it should, it should pay for itself. So those are the reasons I cut it.
And then the only thing I would point out, so you'll ha- it. Would council see that coming out of reserves or would you want cuts made to equate that?
Um, depends on what these cuts we've already made.
Those were coming, the only cut so far has been the fire station and that was coming out of reserves.
And then also the two studies.
Oh, and then the two studies. Yes, you're right, sorry.
So like a hundred?
We have a hundred and ten thousand of current revenue or current cuts in the general fund.
Yep.
And then you had one point two million dollars coming out of reserves.
Yep, and then the plaza is entertainment tax.
Haven't got that far.
Okay.
Had everything on that one?
So is that a yes from everyone?
No, I will not support it, putting it back in there. Uh, it's an enterprise fund. There's, there's a reason it's an enterprise fund and. You just stated that the numbers are all up, uh, and I agree with Mr. Mayor Hanson that. We can't compete against the new guy in town. I mean, he didn't buy that for us to improve the golf course. His tax dollars mean something too, I guess. And I, I won't support it. It's, it's an enterprise fund. That's where it was last year and the year before that too, so.
I would, um, add that if the golf course is doing so well and it's so busy and it's, uh. Just breaking all kinds of records, are, are we, have we raised dues over the last. Double of years to help pay for upcoming improvements? Or are we just gonna come to the city and say, give us some money? Uh, you know.
They've been raised, but not enough to pay for anything new. I think it's just tracking with inflation. Would you agree with that, Kevin?
Due for this year, I've got to be visited in terms of a, an increase for next year. That's, that's not been determined.
Okay.
So you can, you can expect that their cost of operation, which is staffing, is gonna go up a minimum of five percent. So unless they're increasing to offset that, it's gonna go to operations.
Well, what were dues in, uh, green fees or annual dues in twenty four versus twenty five? I mean, if this, this improvements were planned, you would think they'd raise the rates to help pay for it. Uh, what are the rates in twenty four versus twenty five for annual memberships and green fees? Do we know?
I'm sorry, you don't have that right off the top of my head.
I'd say roughly three percent, wouldn't you say?
They went up or don't?
I would, I think the last time they, I would be guessing. The last, but I remember about a year ago, they went up roughly three percent, but not this year.
And it didn't affect.
I'm the liaison in the golf course and when they, I mean, you do city comparisons with everybody, but Rapid City and Sioux Falls are their own entity. Uh, we're right in line. It's just no different than water comparisons, you know, um, right in line with, with all the other class A cities. Um, you know, we're in line with everybody else.
Yeah. Uh, that may be, but are they, uh, I, I don't think you can compare.
Pierre throws in a hundred sixty thousand a year to balance their golf course. That was two years ago. I mean, that's where you're at. I can do research on that and go get it, but, um. Yeah.
All right, what's the direction, what's the direction on this topic, do you guys think?
Dan, did I catch you saying that there's a donation, additional donation of two hundred fifty thousand, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And what, is there any stipulations on that, like?
Excuse me?
Uh, is there any stipulations on it, like act now, act now or lose or?
I didn't work with that. I don't know that. Um, all's I know is we could lose it, you know. Don't wanna say that, but yeah, we could. You know, you could lose it anytime, but, um.
Yeah, correct.
But before everyone decides, if we add this, we have to subtract a million dollars from other budgets.
From reserves, correct. And just to point out the time, we have about three minutes, so I think you should conclude your discussion on this item. Okay.
Do you need more direction on this, Stephanie, or?
Heard is that Dan would like to add, and I've got the notes for the amounts that we have from reserve and the pledge. And I have that Mike Bathke does not support it and I have John asking questions about the dues, but I haven't heard. Consensus on what you would like me to do.
Continue.
To be continued.
Add it to discussion for next Monday, is what I'm hearing.
Okay, okay.
Yep, we, this part will be adjourned and we'll take a quick bathroom break, I guess.
We'll be back at six. Call this meeting to order. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is invocation by resurrection Lutheran. Okay, not here. Start with a roll call.
Sabers. Goldammer.
Here.
Dosher.
Here.
McCardle.
Here.
Barrington.
Here.
Bathke.
Here.
Charts.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Approval of consent agenda items. Items appearing on the consent agenda may be removed by a seat council member for discussion at the beginning of formal agenda items. I need to make one adjustment here to number F. We are going to add a garage to be destroyed at one oh one South Foster. That's the brick garage over there on Foster Street, and I am happy to announce that everybody has moved out of our trailer park, our mobile home, and we had to do no evictions, and everything was good, and it is now completely vacant. So exciting.
Move to approve with the addition.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? What do you want the audience to discuss the consent agenda? Okay, roll call.
Dosher.
Aye.
McCardle.
Aye.
Barrington.
Aye.
Bathke.
Aye.
Charts.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Goldammer.
Aye.
Motion carries. Citizens input. If you need to address the mayor members, members of city council on an item that was not on the agenda, excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium and state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, but no action will be taken at this time.
Greetings, Mayor Hanson and city council members. I am Elizabeth with Mitchell mains from beyond in Happy September. I'm excited to share that their tailgate takedown is in full swing with fourteen local restaurants, competing to serve up the best appetizers in Mitchell. It's a delicious way to celebrate the community and support our local businesses. You can find the menu on the Everything Mitchell app or on our social media. As the month continues, we invite you to join Oktoberfest this Saturday. Come out and enjoy the full lineup of fun and festivities, including steinholding, tire flipping, tire flipping for both kids and adults. So if you can think you can flip like a five hundred pound tire, come on out. Pumpkin throwing for kids and adults, musical chairs, which is actually my favorite, kids and adults, beanbag tournament, wiener dog races, and we're also opening category for dogs twenty-five pounds and under. It has been a request for the last three years that I've been in this job, and we're doing it. So if you were one of those, bring your dog. And then we're doing a hot dog eating contest in front of big dummies. So a lot of new activities. So this Saturday from eleven to four, you can find the full timeline on our social media or at Mitchellmainstreet.com. That's not it. We partnered up again with the three oh, three oh, sorry, three, I'm trying to make sure I got time. Three oh one rods and rides. That is the annual Outcast Car Show, it's just renamed. We are anticipating over two hundred cars to fill from the Corn Palace all the way to Second and Main, and then Second and Main to the depot will be Oktoberfest with food trucks and Oktoberfest themed fun. And then don't forget, on the first Saturday in October is our annual Fall Ladies Day Out. We had one thousand eight hundred and twelve entries last year. And then to help celebrate that day, we're doing a block party, Rock the Block, at Third Ave and Main to celebrate all the renovations that have happened inside and outside in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you here to talk about the lake?
Yeah, I am.
Are we, are we gonna, are we gonna open that up for discussion later? Because, okay, so we'll wait, have you wait till the lake comes around? That's all right. We're gonna have a discussion.
Fine with me.
Okay.
It's fine with me. But you can go ahead and have.
Okay, yeah, so we'll have to come up.
Appreciate it. Thank you much.
Yep, yep. Okay. Would anyone else like to come up and talk about something that is not on the agenda?
I was asked on behalf of the Mitchell Area Inclusion Coalition to let people know that every second Wednesday of the month at the library, they are doing a bilingual story time. So you'll be able to enjoy stories both in English and Spanish. The target audience, I think, is for children at six thirty PM at the Mitchell Public Library. Just as a fun way to experience something new and different. They asked me to announce that in Spanish. Not that good. No mas.
Okay, would anyone else like to address the council? Okay. Next, hearing and action on the following alcohol license applications. The Crown and I Culinary Company doing business as The Green Room, six twenty-three South Sanborn Boulevard for a new retail on-off sale wine and cider license. Video lottery is not included. Chief Knippling.
Well, Mr. Mayor, council staff has reviewed this, so we have no concerns. Recommend approval.
Thank you.
I'd like to move approval.
Okay, we got a motion. We're doing these individually, right? Just to make sure. We're doing these individually, just to make sure. Okay, perfect. Okay, we got a motion? Does anyone have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Smith. Further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I see that the owner is here, and I thought we might give her an opportunity to tell us a little bit about the project. So Kathy Schreier, just.
Come on up.
Actually, just very much a co-owner. So Ann Daly is the actual owner of the building. Ann and I are partnering together on a event center and culinary kitchen, so we very much appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
I'll be abstaining.
And one abstention from Mr. Gold. Second, the Crown and I Culinary Company DBA The Green Room, six twenty-three South Sanborn Boulevard for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license. Video lottery not included. Chief Knippling.
Staff recommends approval of this as well.
Thank you.
No tipper.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
I'll be abstaining.
And one abstention. Motion carries. Next, number nine, Lake Mitchell Project Update. Mr. Schrader, would you like to start this?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Council. We do have Eric Lund and James Herbert with us from Bar Engineering, and I'd like to invite them up to give us their update.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you today. I just have a few slides, I think four or five, then I assume we'll have time for questions and discussion. So I will jump right into it. So my agenda is just to kind of go over the the recent developments that I think folks are are aware of, but make sure we're all kind of grounded on the same page of facts, go through a little bit of background, and then talk about, I think, what the implications of these recent developments are, and some recommendations on on next steps. So the South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources, who is responsible for dam safety in the state of South Dakota, has indicated that they are going to require some additional studies of the existing spillway structure before approving the plans and specifications for the the dam breach that was part of the dredging project. Those studies include a probable maximum flood and inflow design flood. Common vernacular, I guess, a probable maximum flood or a PMF is a, is the largest hypothetical flood that could occur. It's very conservative, specific to occur to a specific region. So what's the biggest fault that could happen in Mitchell, South Dakota? And then also looking at spillway capacity and freeboard analysis. And spillway capacity, a little more self apparent, it's the ability for the spillway to pass flows over the top of it. And then freeboard is the, basically the height difference between the top of the dam and the water surface during a flood event. And so that's, there's minimums that are required for those that can account for, you know, waves and precipitation prevent overtopping of the of the dam. And when I say dam, I'm talking about the earthen structure in addition to the concrete spillway. Those studies are clearly triggered by our current conversations with the state, but but the state did indicate that these would have been required of the city at some point in the future, even if there was not a project. And I guess I maybe should have started with this. I share in the disappointment that this is kind of the situation that we're at right now. Permian challenges on this project to scale are not uncommon, though frustrating. And I think the next steps are to get kind of, we'll, we'll talk about the next steps, but that's sort of the background on on the recent developments. Again, I think we'll have time for for Q and A. A little more background. So we, the project team, had been interacting with the state for several years, dating back to two thousand twenty-two, had had meetings on what types of permits would be needed. These particular studies had not come up in those previous meetings and interactions. But I would note that I think dam safety regulations are evolving and inexplicit for the type of project that we're talking about, where we're, you know, modifying as part of a project versus repairing or building a new dam. From an implication standpoint, schedule, so the Lake Toronto project is not going to start in two thousand twenty-five. We think that the requested studies likely take about three to six months to complete. So the city asked, you know, what's kind of best case scenario? What's worst case scenario? I think best case scenario would be that these studies are completed, they suggest that the dam meets all current standards and regulations, and the lake project can begin then next year. I think the worst case scenario, which, you know, predicting i- is difficult, but the studies suggest that the dam does not meet the requirements and that potential modifications are needed. That could look like a lot of different things, depending on what the studies show, you know, raising the spillway, applying for a variance, whatever might be expanding the length of the spillway. But you won't know this until you get through the studies. And so for that reason, it puts the project at risk either from a schedule perspective, a cost perspective, or a scope perspective. Implications on the cost side, we gave a high level initial range on additional studies likely to take a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars. Our bars spending on design and permitting has paused, right, while we while we develop the path forward. So the large budget that this council approved a few weeks ago, we're not using all of that, we'll figure out a path forward. So our suggested next steps, additional interaction with the state to confirm exactly what is being required and understand the potential implications of those studies, then complete the required studies, and then finally present the results to the state, and based on those results, determine the path forward for the lake project. Okay, that's what I have prepared, and I will take questions. Thank you. Why don't we start with the questions from the council, if they have them first, before we let the audience have a chance?
Yeah, just quickly, I have to assume that you've done projects in the past that had dams or spillways or or other structures like this, where there are no studies required of those?
Yeah, so part of our, yes, we've done studies of dams, we've done projects where there were not studies required of dams. You know, I think the, I noticed noted on the slides, I think the kind of regulations are evolving a little bit. And we've seen many projects where sort of these required studies are not part of the project, they're decoupled from the project. I think particularly where it's a dam repair or a dam rehabilitation versus permitting, design, and building a brand new dam.
Who does the studies? You folks?
That'll be, that'll be a city decision, but typically a consulting engineering company would do those. I know we met with the state, I think Joe might have asked the state if they ever do them, you know, on behalf of dam owners, and they said no. Joe's reached out to a few different engineering firms to get either prices or quotes or timelines and everything like that, so.
You suggested that it might take three to six months. Can it be done when there's ice on the lake and?
Yeah, these are, these are desktop studies.
Okay.
So they're looking at precipitation trends in the area, developing sort of a hydrologic model, and then looking at downstream impacts. Yeah, they're they're desktop paper studies.
I've had people ask me, when did you find out that we need to do this study?
Late August.
A lot of people think, you know, we gave you the money, and then all of a sudden this came out, and people, I've had this asked numerous times, that they seem to think it seems kind of fishy. We gave you the money, and then all of a sudden this study comes back after you you received the money.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe knew ahead of time. That's kind of what they're asking me to ask.
Yeah, we did not know that ahead of time. We wouldn't try to play a game like that. We, as we moved through the the process, right, that a complex project moves through, where you're going through investigations and doing some preliminary design, then you're getting into final design, then you're getting through permits, we re-engaged with the state and had the had the meeting with numerous different parts of of the Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources, and then had a follow-up meeting with with the dam safety folks. That was on the twenty-fifth of August. Then they decided to, or they said we needed some more, they needed more time to discuss internally what was going to be required. I can't recall if it was later that week or the following week that they then came back and said, these are what we're going to require of the city.
You kind of explained the a little bit on the the precipitation and so forth of of the area, and will will they be measuring then the the dam's capability? And then you said studies, so there's one basically upstream and then one downstream? Is that basically what what it's going to entail? Or can you just explain the two studies themselves, just kind of high level?
Yeah, so I think, and it wouldn't be me performing the study, there would be experts, whether it's from our company or one of the other firms that Mr. Hanson mentioned, that have, you know, a background in the hydrology and things like that. But it's basically trying to evaluate how much water could be coming into the lake, right, from the precipitation and the flow rate perspective, and then is the is the dam high enough, is the spillway large enough to store and pass those flows in a safe manner without over, you want to overtop that when I talk about the freeboard, for example, builds up too much, you get strong winds, waves, I think, go over the top, start to your road, things like that. So it's, is it big enough to store the amount of water that it's going to receive at a basic level?
In the last seven years, five years, we've had two, what we've called hundred-year floods, we've had five hundred-year floods, we've had these massive rainstorms. I would think if all they're doing is checking the flow, that we've proven that it is seaworthy. So what more is there that they can do? What more do they need?
Yeah, no, I think, and and the point that you bring up is, I think, why some of the regulations are evolving as we've experienced larger intensity storm events. You know, I think it's it's seeing the model, seeing the results, having something to review and approve versus anecdotal that it, you know, survived.
So can you explain where we're at exactly with the permit process? I know there's several, and can we continue with the permitting or or applying, or is everything that on hold also?
So we have submitted to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers the application for the nationwide permit that I think I spoke with you all about a month or two ago. So that's in, that's in review. We've had back and forth on that one. The, there are other Danner state permits, a Water Resource Enhancement Restoration Permit. We put the pause on kind of spending more time and and cost on those permits. What we figured out is path forward. I think if the city and folks get comfortable that there is a viable path forward, and we understand the schedule better, those can be certainly just picked right back up. There's no wasted, you know, progress on those. But we have, that's the one that we have submitted formally, is the Army Corps of Engineers permit application.
When did they submit those permits?
The Army Corps?
Yeah.
I don't have the date of that. I could follow back up with you.
Was it like this August?
July or August. It was August. It was first half of August.
I believe it was August twelfth.
The only question I have is, is there a checklist of all the things we need to do before we can do this project? Just to make sure we don't have anything else unforeseen. You know what I'm saying? Check, 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 check. I I think it's a fair question. I think it's something we could provide and.
I, along with that checklist, is there also any potential other future studies that could come out as potential issues from either the state of South Dakota or the federal government that we might then additionally have to pay for that are not currently as a part of our budgeted plan?
It's hard to say no to, is there anything potentially that could come up? Don't mean that as a tongue-in-cheek response. You know, I think, I think if we put together this checklist that's been suggested and have a thorough vetting of that, I think we could feel comfortable. We've identified the potential risks and potential additional studies that are potentially be requested.
Eric, when this, when this first started, when I came here two years ago, the initial plan was to cut through the earthen dam, not the the concrete dam. And I, am I right to say that we've switched because the state will not allow that because of the new road?
I don't know that the state would not allow it. We performed some additional evaluations and identified flood risks associated with going through there that would flood the road at a frequency of a storm event that us in the city weren't comfortable with. And so we pivoted to going through the spillway, where is it, if the water comes up, you have the big storm event, the the water stays in the basin. So no, I don't think the state said no to that.
Then, I mean, I just don't know why we do. You and I have had this conversation a couple of different times. I don't know why we don't go back to the earthen dam. I really don't. I don't understand what, I mean, the chances are, it could happen, but they're very slim. And I just, I cringe at the idea of cutting that dam apart. You know, it's already been layered, I believe, a foot in the eighties. And, you know, I know we've done some core samples. I don't know if you've been supplied with them, if that's all good, or are we gonna get into a problem where we do, and done the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar study, and they say the dam won't do it, go back to doing nothing?
So I'll try to take those kind of one at a time. It's okay, and remind me if I if I missed something. I don't think that the, I can't speak for the state, but I don't think that their opinion on these studies would be different if we were going through the earthen portion of the dam versus the concrete portion of the dam. It's still the dam, and they would still need to review and approve the plans and specifications. And what they've told us, as part of their review and approval, they're going to require these studies. So I don't think that alleviates that.
Okay, so I'm gonna stop you. So then, why, two years later, I know we talked about this two years ago, doing it through the earth, why was the study not required then?
Yeah, I understand the the question and the frustration. I, it wasn't brought up until August is the simplest answer. To be fair, I yelled at Eric a little bit on the phone when we found this out. So thanks for staying on the hot seat, Eric. Sorry I yelled at you. But Joe, it sounds like sat in on quite a few of those dinner meetings, and so even our city staff was there, because I was like, what the heck? And it was never brought up then either, to give the benefit of the doubt, and to be fair. Would would you agree with that, Joe? Mr. Schrader?
I do. And I do agree with Mr. Lund's response, that if even touching the earth embankment, they'll still require the studies.
Okay, so any other questions from council before we let the audience come up?
Okay, so any other questions from council before we let the audience come up and?
I just want to make one more comment, just to reiterate that uh, this study could be required at any time. So even if we did find an option that doesn't touch the spit, the structure, the spillway structure or the earthen dam. Um, they could come in at any time and say, hey, this is, we're requiring this. It wouldn't require any trigger. It's just something the state could step in and require.
Okay, so I have a follow-up question for that. If they do require the study, could they force us to make whatever improvements at that time? Or do we only have to make improvements if we, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Adjust anything to the, you know, or change anything to the current dam?
This, I think this gets a little in the attorney world. Um, but if we did those studies, um, and a result be. Became from that, um, I think this is speculation. I would assume they'd give us an amount of time to complete those improvements. Um, or else if there was a catastrophe and we didn't meet those requirements, I would imagine we could be held liable for damages.
Right. I, I would just add, there's a, there's a variance pathway too. If the studies don't meet the strict requirements. And you can do another layer of evaluation and suggest that a variance might be appropriate.
So would it be fair to say we, we have a choice to go through the dam or go through the earth yet?
Regardless, they're still going to require.
Right. I know we need to study, but we have a choice to make. Do we want to do a study on the earth? Or do we want to study on the concrete?
No, that's, so the, and Eric can correct me if I'm wrong. The way I understand it is, um, there's two studies they're requiring. One is sunny day, dam breaks, water goes out. Um, that's study one. Uh, and what that flooding looks like, uh, houses it inundates those types of things, structures.
Okay, real quick, when you say dam, are you talking about concrete and dirt?
I'm not sure the requirements of, but the water goes, it's sunny out.
Something bad.
Earthen embankment or spillway breaks. I'm not sure what the requirement is on how they look at that, but the water from the lake is removed. Um, the second thing they're requiring us to look at is, we get a huge storm. Uh, it's modeled. It's how high does the water get on the earthen embankment? It's my understanding the requirement is, uh, they prefer a foot of freeboard. So let's say there's less than a foot, and when I say a foot of freeboard, that means top of water to stop, top of earthen embankment. If that uh, is not met, let's say you don't over top, there's a, there's a variance. Um, there's also a variance determining on the um, the breach study. So there's a multitude of things to look at. Based off of the results of those studies. Did I summarize that correctly?
Yeah, I think largely, yeah.
During those.
We're not studying, pardon me.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
We're not studying the structure. It's the, the water coming in and the water going out.
Like a flood analysis.
During those uh, large major flooding events that we had in the last several years, um, how high did it get?
I believe the highest it's been, has been forty-two inches over the spillway um, since I've worked here.
And what are we looking for?
I want to say right now there's twelve feet from top of spillway to top of earthen embankment, roughly ten to twelve.
It's significant, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, if I went to my, my last slide again, I, I do think a prudent next step is. Additional meetings with the state and just being crystal clear on what they're asking for, what they're going to require, what the implications are.
So who, did you guys perform the, the core test on the dam itself, the concrete dam?
We retained a, a chlorine sub.
And those are all good. So the state's not going to come back and say, now I'll go back and get us a study and record the, the dam?
Yeah, I mean, it was the, the concrete was variable in composition. It, it isn't old, you know, concrete structure and, and. You don't see what you would see in one port today. Um, so to us, the results of this study were to inform what we need to do to protect the adjacent part of this. This spillway while the lake is drained and water is still passing through, as well as the subgrade. What was it, the subgrade? Um, and then what needs to be done to sort of tie them back together. So it wasn't, it wasn't a complete assessment of the integrity of the dam.
Me saying that, I guess I would be very clear that when you have this meeting, state that they're not going to require this to pause the project another year.
Agreed. That's why I asked for a checklist, because then we know what we're anticipating in the future.
And just for the folks at home or anyone in the audience, so the way this would work is we would pump the water out first. And then cut a hole, whether it be in the cement or the dirt. So if we get a big flood, then the lake doesn't fill back up and we have to pump it out and start the whole project over again. It's not like we're just going to blow a hole in the spillway and let her, let it rip, right? I just want to make sure everyone is aware of that.
Yeah, I probably should have started with some more background. I apologize.
Well, we've been talking about it for years. So I just wanted to give a little recap.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Do you know, else have any questions on the council before we? Okay, so, so we're not going to just cut a hole in the spillway and just let the water drain out, like we're stabbing a hole in a pool. We're essentially going to have large pumps that pump the water out, then the lake will be dry. Once the lake's dry, then we're going to either cut a hole in the spillway, which is the current plan or in the earthen dam. So, yep, so we're not just gonna, even though that would be fun, we're not going to do that. Okay. So before we go open up the audience, because we're going to have the audience come up to the podium, does anyone in the council have any other further questions?
Um, budget-wise, where are we at with the budget for this project?
We have. Would this come out of contingency? I guess it'd be a good question if we, if the council so chose to do this, or would this come out of a future budget?
Wouldn't be able to take it out of contingency. I think you could do a supplement of some sort to pay for it out of either the lake fund or whatever you need to do. Uh, but we wouldn't have two-hundred-thousand dollars in contingency to make that happen.
No, I mean the contingency fund of the lake project, because I think there's three million dollars in there. Yep. Yeah, not our city contingency.
Yep, so the last bar contract was August fourth, and in that, um, in my staff report, it identified that um. Within the twenty-five-million-dollar budget, uh, there's three million, two-hundred-one-thousand, five-hundred dollars in contingency currently. Say that.
How much have we used?
None.
Oh, how much have we used of our current budget?
Of our contingency in the lake, in the lake budget.
Is that after the additional approval for design fees?
Yeah, that'd be the only thing that we've used, seven-hundred-ninety-eight thousand, five-hundred.
So that would, we're, our current one is at two-point-five million roughly?
And that's approved contract, so I would say less than five percent of that has been spent so far.
Okay, follow-up question. Can we get a, can we get a checklist before we decide to do this study or not? Because it'd be good to have more information, right? Yeah, okay. Just making sure. We won't only say, yeah, we'll do a study then. Oh yeah, by the way, you need eleven more studies, right? Just want to make sure we know.
It's a fair request.
Okay. Okay, anyone else have any questions from the council? And then I suppose we'll let the audience come up and ask questions and Eric, if you want to.
One, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I was just real quick, what, so the timeline of this, are we waiting for the state on anything or are they waiting on us?
Uh, they're probably waiting on us to follow back up with them with additional Q and A. Um, you know, we, we were preparing to send them in our plans and specifications to review when this came to. So we didn't do that yet, knowing that they're going to require these additional studies. So they'll be. They don't have an action they have to take right now. Their action was to leave that meeting they had, confer internally. And come back and tell us what they were going to require. And they did that. So now it's on the, the project team to take that and move forward.
And then in your own personal opinion, with the um, the study three to six months. What do you anticipate at everything if it goes somewhat right? When do you think we could hire an engineering firm? This fall yet or this winter?
To do the study, you're saying?
Yeah, do the study.
That would be our decision when we decide to hire it, as long as we have budget authority?
That's, that's on us now.
Yeah.
And our current budget still has reserves for the lake project, correct? So like we could use, I mean, not with budget authority, but we could, we have budget designated?
You, you have cash that you've transferred into the lake fund for the drawdown project. So essentially you could do a supplemental to use that uh, for this if you move forward. It's, I think back to the original question earlier, are you doing it within the existing project contingency? That's currently at three-point-two.
That's a good point, because some of that contingency would probably be included in the, in the loan or however that's decided to be broken down.
So I guess if council decides to move forward, you approve a contract, we will do a supplemental budget to get you the budget authority to do it. It's gonna, gonna come out of this total project cost unless we hear differently from you. Does that make sense? A little more clear?
Okay. Any further questions from council? We'll probably have Eric hang out close in case that people want to ask you questions directly, so. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to come ask the council or Mr. Lund? We got some eager people. Just make sure to state your name if you're going to come up here.
Hi, Dennis Brackey. I live on North Harmon. I only have two questions tonight. First of all, to, to you, Mike, if we're, if we decide to breach the earthen dam. And we get our epic seven-inch rain or ten-inch rain, even after we pump the water out, where does that water go? It's gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna, i- if you don't have the hole in the, in the da- in the dam itself. That you breached the earthen dam, if the water's going through there, where's it going? Going on the highway uh, thirty, thirty-seven or thirty-eight, I mean? Where's the water go?
It's into the, through, down to the dam, correct? It flows from south to north. Can you bring up a map?
You get that kind of a rain and that kind of torrential rain, you're going to have erosion going down that new ditch there.
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to put rocks if we did it, right? That's what we discussed.
So the, the answer to your question is, um, essentially, um, engineering-wise, they can't allow that to happen. So that'd be a big issue with the state uh, for the project. So it'd be engineered in a way so that um, the timeline of everything is so that.
So why, why are we breaching the earthen dam then?
We're, right now, we're breaching the, the spillway structure.
The comment by Mike was that, why don't we breach the earthen dam and not the cement spillway?
Right now, the plan is to breach the, the concrete spill.
I understand that.
Yep.
The reason why, I believe, and Bar could probably answer that better, but there was risk associated with the, uh, an extreme flood event. If it was through the.
Yeah, because if we get this ten-inch rain, we're going to have extreme flooding going through that cut in the earthen dam, aren't we?
So I think what the plan was, can you just zoom in on that a little bit and I'll just point to what they were going to do?
Cause they were gonna, it was basically gonna go from here to here. Zach, would you agree with that, Eric? The original plan was to go from here to here. Yes, generally.
Wow. And that's, if you got that, if you had that flooding there. And it eroded that whole thing, that wouldn't, it looks to me like that would weaken the cement spillway, but.
That's why we switched to going to the concrete.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
Okay. Well, the only other thing I would have, gentlemen, and this is for you. Um, I think it's a conflict of interest for Barr to be doing this uh, D A and R s- study. I think you should contact a different engineering firm to do that, because it's in their interest for the numbers to come out correctly. So I would hope that you would look at that.
I have one question, or maybe you can answer it. Somebody handed this out and they didn't put their name on it. So I'm not going to read it till you put your name on it, okay?
Put my name on it. I'll put my name on it for you. Thank you, Mike. Hey, thank you very much for allowing me to uh, present here today. A lot of what I'm going to talk about.
Can you say your name real quick?
My name, I'm sorry. My name is Rod Brackey and I own Lake Property on fifty-nine South Harmon. Uh, I've had a handout tonight, which I was going to read, but, but I decided that it looks like we've got a lot of speakers here today, so I wasn't going to take that extra time. Instead, I'm handing this out to Mike here and you can pass it around to the committee. So I've decided, uh, so, and so I'm just going to be asking a few questions and present a few suggestions for your, for your consideration. Questions that I've had through this whole thing, first of all. Number one, how, how, how did the city council circumvent the sixty percent majority needed for bond issues to pass? When it only passed by thirty votes, question number one. Number two, why were voters not informed that improvements to the lake involved draining the lake? The wording on the ballot was not very specific. If the lake, number three, if the lake was so polluted or is so polluted. Why did you, okay, dump polluted water into the James River to pollute waters downstream? Number four. Why did you not investigate, which you've been talking about here again, so this is kind of a repeat. Why did you not investigate the strength of the one-hundred-and-four-year-old dam? If the dam does not pass the stress dance, draining, of course, will not be allowed, allowed to happen anyway. However, if, if the lake had been drained, if it had been drained and the dam had, had broken in the process. Flooding would probably have occurred like it did in Lake Traverse in the northeast part of the state in nineteen, nineteen eighty-nine. Which caused seven-point-five million dollars in damage to farm and crops. Number five. Why have you not researched hydraulic dredging, which is the most effective method of cleaning a lake? Piping the dirt through tubes and whatever, out of the lake bed, much better than hauling four-thousand truckloads of sludge out of the lake. Another comment, if you have not, if you had done some sufficient research, you would also have found that draining a lake never gets rid of algae. Algae is a part of the ecosystem and will always return. Uh, maybe you all know that, okay? You're never going to get rid of this algae. It's going to be coming back, especially since you're going to only dredge half of the lake. I'm going to dredge half of the lake. Well, anyway, because there's so many what ifs, okay, I suggest the city council change course so everyone is satisfied. Everybody on, on, all the groups are satisfied. The following are some suggestions. Pay Barr Engineering for their work that they've done so far. Number two, hire a hydraulic dredge firm and dredge the lake and pipe that, that dredge out of the lake. The James River Association will be satisfied that water pollution will, and algae, potassium and all that will not be released in the James River. Number four, friends of the fire still will get the lake dredged that they have wanted to do. And have money left in order to complete additional projects to help clean the lake. There's about, from what I gather, about twenty-three drainage areas coming into this lake off the golf course. Off other various parts of the lake. They're going to be continually dumping into your lake, okay? While you're trying to dredge this thing. Number five, lake residents who have to deal with looking at a mud hole for, for up to who knows how many years. By the time you drain it, you dredge it. Okay, all, and then by the time it gets refilled, you could be looking at four, five, six, seven years, all right, depending on the weather. They also won't have to sell their homes at a reduced price because of the value of their homes are going down because of that. Elderly residents can still enjoy remaining years looking at the, at the lovely lake, because when you hydraulically jet dredge it, as, as you know. You do not have to take the water, drain the water out of the lake. We all want the same thing here, okay? We all want the same thing in this room. We all want it to be more beautiful lake. We want a clean lake as much as we can. I think we can all agree to that. Working together, however, and making good common sense, okay, out of this whole project can make everything happen and satisfy everybody involved. Hydraulic dredging is the only way to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is my fourth time up here this year. And I'm, I'm Tom Fergan, uh, sixty-four South Harmon Drive. Now you council members represent the citizens. Can the citizens ask you that, that we get the information that we need to have? Here's my request. Number one, engineers report on the dredging process of draining the lake. Number one. Two, boring reports. We should be able to get them as the citizens. Were boring samples taken on the sediment in the lake. That's number two. Number three, the report on the sediment, the solids that run off as it enters the Jim River. Number four, when the water enters the storm sewer, it is being dumped into the lake. We know that. Question, rest of these questions are for the public works director, city engineer. How much are we allocated for additional costs? No, I know you got some set us up, but there's going to be more that's going to occur with that. Why not dredging the whole lake? We're still going to have fossil algae still existing. I'm aware that the hydraulic dredging will be more expensive. With this method, there are no uncertainties. We're not taking a chance. What can happen? What can happen? Note that hydraulic dredging covers the whole seven and two acres of the lake nature, the whole thing, not just part of it, the whole thing. What is the rationale of draining the lake first and then taking bits? I don't get it. You're at the mercy of the ones that putting price on this this project. And one number, next point, how do we arrive at the cost of draining the lake? I wanna know that. We as citizens got a right to know these points. Again, as Rod said, we all want the same results, cleaner lake. We do have an urgency here. That is, do we see things as they truly are? Respectful submitted, Tom Ferg.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody listening to me.
Would anyone else like to discuss this? Nobody else? You guys all here for raffle permits out there? Okay. Does anyone else have any questions in the council? Joe, you got any questions? Okay, we'll move on. I guess what, before you answer that. Are we looking to decide some sort of direction on whether we wanna do the study or not, or are we?
It's just discussion.
Okay, are we gonna discuss that or? What direction would you guys like to take as my question?
Uh some of those questions that were asked by the two speakers uh warrant. Or consideration and answers, and so I would suggest that we give Joe and his team and Barr time to. Answer.
While we're giving that time, I would be okay in the future future council meeting to look at not only that checklist we talked about, but then also. In that same meeting, hopefully talking about approving some kind of engineering study as the state sounds like it's gonna require either way. Whether or not we move forward with this project at some point, and so at some point, we're gonna have to do these studies anyways, and so. Certainly would be good to look at those costs as well.
So the consensus is we shall gather more information and make a decision at a later time? That's uncorrect?
Well, and Mayor, don't mean to jump in here, but.
No, go ahead.
I think it came up earlier, I just wanna make sure that people caught it, that if we're going to move ahead with the studies, Joe's gonna have to bring back a contract. With an engineer to perform those studies and you'd be able to have these conversations at that time, so. Just wanted to point that out.
And I'm I'm happy to answer any questions uh that were presented tonight. I just need direction from you if you want to. Want that in this setting, or if you want me to write written answers and submit them, or how you'd like me to address those.
I would say, why don't you just gather as much information as you can and then get some other study costs and other firms, and then we can bring back. Some costs and then we could figure out some sort of contract we wanna look over and then we would have. Contract to look at and more information to make the decision. Does that sound fair to everyone, or am I out?
It doesn't sound like the study's optional. It sounds like something we need to do, right?
If we wanna move forward with the lake project, yes.
It's not regardless, I mean, they're not.
Yeah, you could be asked five years from now to do the same study regardless.
I I think that's something that the state would have to clarify as to whether it's still gonna be required, whether the project moves forward or not.
Obviously, the voters have voted to move forward with the project, so we need to. Work on that study and get that done so we can continue to move forward.
Yeah, I I agree. Um there was very good questions tonight, but over the last five, six years, we've actually talked about most of them. And Joe, you probably got a lot of it in your file, and there's no reason why we can't at least relay the information we've got from the engineering firms. And the professionals, and that's the reason why we decided to go the direction we are. Uh but yes, I would like to see the study come back so we can take a look at it and and hopefully get the majority of the questions answered. Uh that they brought up tonight.
Susan, a better answer to your question would have been, it's a matter of if or when we have to do the study, not if. So eventually, it would be something that has to happen.
Sure. And so um obviously, there's this. Giant project that we're waiting, we need to do this in order to proceed, so the. Once again, I reiterate that the voters have spoken and they have voted to move forward with the dredging project. Um and so this is part of what we need to do in order to do that, so I think we need to have the study then.
Justin, would you please address uh Mr. Brackey's comment, question, or whatever you wanna call it about the sixty percent majority needed? I thought that we've kind of cleared that up as far as these states state law, would you please clear it up?
Yeah, and I'm gonna try to keep it really simple, is that there are certain bond issues where you are required to have a sixty percent majority. And there are certain types where you need a simple majority. This is the type of a bond that only requires a simple majority.
Okay. If there's nothing further, we'll move on. Next, the decision on twenty third and Almond intersection for final design, Mr. Schrader.
Uh Mr. Mayor Council, uh this was presented at our a week work session a week ago. Um during the work session, we talked about um so the costs associated. Uh with this that are not in the budget.
If we could just take conversations out into the hallway, that would be great.
I think, so I think from the last. I think from the last uh work session, um I think the roundabout uh made it pretty well into the public. Which is, no, which is good. Uh we need that. Um so since the new material was presented at the work session as far as um the budget and what would be needed. Um additional from what was previously discussed, I think we could start with that and then move into questions if that's alright with you.
So again, if you were watching the work session earlier, this would would be a repeat of what we talked about um earlier today. When this was presented last week, we didn't have what the cost impact to the budget would be if a. Uh roundabout was you was considered for this intersection or selected, so the costs are shown up on the board. Um item line F there, you can see the general fund would increase seven hundred and fifteen thousand one forty six. If you were to do a roundabout with and the city would cover the cost of the sidewalk. If you were to do the roundabout roundabout and then have the sidewalk cost assessed, which is typically what we would do in a project like this. The increased cost would be six hundred and fifteen thousand three ninety five. If you were to just do a project as a normal stop sign intersection, we're still gonna have a general fund increase. Of a hundred and sixty five thousand eight hundred if we do a sidewalk assessment. As the city covers the sidewalks, the cost increases two hundred and sixty five thousand five hundred dollars. So really, the roundabout, you could look at the difference between the seven fifteen to the two sixty five and the six thirteen to the one sixty five. To get what the cost of that roundabout.
Stephanie, if I can get further clarification, so we all know the roundabout, we're talking about twenty third and Almond. And then earlier tonight, we were going through the budget hearings and we're talking about sidewalks included. And we said it was from from twenty third to Kemper. So is is that part of the road project then? Is included into the roundabout with?
So these are just the difference in budget and the project costs that we showed in budget and what the actual project costs are. There's a gonna be a little diff- whoa, I have the exact same dollar amount. Oh, okay, that's good. Yeah, that's good. That's, so the roundabout is really costing the four forty nine, five ninety five. The rest is the cost of the sidewalk factored in, and the city's gonna have costs into the sidewalk project, just like Joe stated. Because it's an eight foot sidewalk and the city covers the difference with thigh foot. So we we do three foot of that sidewalk cost, it was not included in the original proposal. So really, the cost to add the roundabout is four forty nine.
I guess I'll start with a question. So as I reviewed the study, um it talked about housing increases and traffic flow increases. Um can you just briefly go over how some of those numbers came about?
Uh that's in the traffic study start part of it, um that H G R did, but they looked at the acreages and what we had for lot sizes and then based that on a. Percentage of of people uh based one on what we go. So. So it basically by acre and then they divided it up by how many lots we think we'd have.
Um Jeff, some of the uh comments I got uh were there's and and you covered a lot of this, obviously, last.
Very fast.
Very fast. Um but the um the highlights of the of the roundabout and maybe discuss the fact of the size. Um can it handle semis and pedestrian? Um and then also the safety consideration, they think uh the comments I've been getting, it's a it's. Safety wise, it's the worst you can have, and you presented it's the best we can have, so if if you could just step through some, yeah, that. That screen right there, that's got a lot of information on it.
So that screen is a brochure that comes out from the federal highway and talks about the safety of it. And the purpose of putting it for pedestrian type traffic. Uh you know, one of them we have in South Dakota here is on SDSU campus between their performing arts center, their stadium and their arena. Obviously, they've got significant pedestrian traffic in that location. So that's one of the reasons that that they're looked at. Uh the others, just to continue to have that that continuous continuous flow of traffic, so you don't have to stop. So you may be slowing down significantly. But you're not necessarily coming to the stop, and that's why we're able to move people through more quickly, even though they're at a at a safer speed. Uh so that's really why it's looked at is from a pedestrian standpoint. Um and doing some of this, looked at some more research in areas and uh there's a some really good information from the city of Lincoln, Nebraska on it. Uh their first roundabout they added in two thousand two, they took out a lighted intersection and went to a roundabout. And in their study of that, in the next um three years, total crashes dropped by eighty three percent. Ninety five percent reduction in injury crashes, and they estimated a savings of property of of vehicles of eight hundred and ten thousand. In that three years. Since then, they've added numerous roundabouts um within their community, so. Um obviously, they're, I mean, it's not just going from a a rule section like we have of single stop. They're actually taking lights out in places and putting roundabouts in place because of their effectiveness.
Jeff, can you demonstrate um by looking at a picture of one of the roundabouts, how a pedestrian would cross the street? And while you're at it, because this will be part of our bike path, um will the bikes share the roundabout? Or will they um share the path that the pedestrians will be going on?
Sure. Um why don't you go back to one of the that first green slide, uh one more back. Alright, if you look, and this is this is a complicated one, in the yeah, that one right there. So you can see the locations where the crosswalks are. So you at no point walked the center circle of the roundabout. You, the reason that they have them, they move them back away from where all of that turning traffic is. And so you're crossing traffic at a single, single po- point. Now, as far as the bike path goes, uh you know, the estimate we put in this area and and going around the sidewalk area of it. Would be the wider bike path portion of it, so. Your amateur bicyclist, myself, without my my daughter and stuff, we're gonna follow around those crosswalks and go that part of it. If there's someone out there riding to ride sixty miles for the day, he's probably gonna be on the roadway anyways. Most of them are using the um the the paths or the trails from that standpoint. But yeah, your crossing point is away from the intersection. You will not walk to the roundabout.
And that we will have those similar crosswalk markings on the road.
Correct, yes, yeah.
So will there be a? There you are. Answer my question. You're gonna have the center median in there, yeah?
Yes.
Like the stop point.
Yeah, yeah.
One question I got a lot, real quick, sorry. One one question I got from a lot of people is, can this handle like a triple double or like a double trailer, like semi trailer?
Yeah, so um actually sent out to H G R again today of what the maximum limits are in South Dakota for for trucks. But they looked at a W B sixty seven tractor trailer, which is about as standard as you're gonna get. Um and then I did ask about the same thing as pulling double. I know we got a granite grain elevator that's right there. Uh a lot of those are probably going through there. Um they said there's a lot of variation in what that dimensions can be, so that's why I gave them the South Dakota requirements. They said a lot of those can do it with greater ease because there's another joint in there which they can go around. If you look at like the right turn coming out of, if you're going from Twin City Fan, you wanna turn and go uh back east on twenty third. Um we're actually that right turn, which would be one of the more difficult ones for a truck to make, they gotta go right now, go out into the traffic to do it. Um I wanna say the existing radius for that's like a thirty something now, and we're gonna go to almost a ninety foot radius in that. So that's a much broader sweeping turn coming around that right turn for those truck traffic. So it's actually gonna be easier for them to navigate than it currently is.
How about for like moving houses? I know they're gonna plan on putting a bunch of governor's houses out there.
So I I talked to uh Robinson House Moving about it. Uh first thing he did is laughed at and said I avoid them as all I can, cause they're just difficult. But but with that, he said he'd probably try to find a a different alternate route, but if we put traffic signals here. He'd be at the same point. They'd have to either get someone in to move the arms of the traffic signals or something of that nature. Um there is pictures you can find uh on the internet of, there's one where there's a big Victorian type house. Moving around a roundabout, and I can see where they had all the traffic signs laid down. And I'm sure they're still taking up the whole intersection and going over islands and everything of that nature as as they do it. Um and you could also find another one where somebody tried to drive through the middle of the the heart of it and got stuck in the landscaping portion of it. So I mean, um yeah, your house moving's probably not gonna be an easy, he mentioned that he would try to avoid them. But um again, going back to that big broader sweeping intersection. Uh other than the traffic signs that we have to direct people where to go and the pedestrian crossing and all of that. Um there possibly would be there a room for. I know that's not a hundred percent answer to your question, but I couldn't find anyone that's taking a house through it um that I could speak to.
Jeff, will there be a line of sight through the entire intersection? Will that be low enough? Um do you know what I'm saying?
Right, um I suppose there can be, I mean, if you go and look at like the one in Watertown on highway eighty one. Uh that was just kind of a grass uh mound, you'd kinda see through it. But really, in the idea of trying to get people to really slow down and calm traffic down, I don't necessarily know if that's something that they're looking for. Um cause most of them have some type of landscaping and trees or something in in that nature um within them. There's another one in Watertown, actually, up in the northeast corner, right by their uh new middle school uh that. Actually, if you go on the street view on it, you can get to one glitch in the spot where it's the old intersection. And you move just a little bit and it goes to the new intersection, and that one you cannot see through it. Uh now, there's enough vegetation and stuff that you really can't see through the that portion of it.
Where is this one that you're showing us, Stephanie? Okay, cause obviously that. That looks like just a patch.
I mean, this is another good example of, I haven't seen this picture before, but as you can see, the truck that's turning there, that center. Colored apron that's on there, granted, that's not where your cars and traffic can go, but if there's a truck or a larger truck. Or a double trying to make that turn, they can go on and use that apron for that additional turning.
How big is, I would guess that gets a pretty heavy use for truck, trucks.
On highway eighty one, that's gotta get significant truck.
That's another thing.
The other one that you can think of, there's uh right off the interstate at Worthington, right in that industrial area. Think of, there's uh right off the interstate at Worthington, right in that industrial area. Uh, there's one at that, right at the base of the um exit ramp.
How big is that one in comparison to this proposed one?
That one there at on eighty one, I believe, is a hundred and eighty five feet, just going off the Google Earth imagery of it. Um, the one we are proposing was a hundred and fifty uh that H D R had submitted. And then uh if you look at the one in Watertown that's on like the north side of town by their middle school. Uh, that one's only about a hundred and twenty five from what I could tell. So, but I don't know what they have for truck traffic in that location. Yeah. I mean, they do have bus traffic, obviously, cause there's the middle school right there.
One of the.
There's numerous of them over there, but yeah.
One of the consistent comments I received from people who are not in favor of this is they're concerned about the learning curve. Can you talk to us a little bit about how difficult it is to learn to maneuver a roundabout?
Um, you know, you you almost can't drive to one of the new Harrisburg middle schools without having to go through one of them for one. Um, and you go anywhere in Minneapolis that are on that, you're you're gonna run into both of them. Um, staying at uh or in Minneapolis here the last, in the summer for some baseball games. Had to go through two of them just from the hotel to the ball field. Uh, first time you're trying to get figured out exactly where you're going. Once you've gone through it, you know. Uh, it it goes pretty slick. Um, there there is, um, where did I see that at? I think it was the city of Sioux Falls, possibly before they installed their first one, which uh they're on eight plus. They did a um, came across the flyer today, a a type of roundup. Re- a roundabout roundup or something like that, where they went to a public par- or public parking lot. Coned it out so that people could just come and drive. So something of that nature. I honestly think it's pretty quick. I mean, they wouldn't be adding them like they are if they were having problems. This map here, I know you can't see it from there, but so I said about Lincoln, Nebraska. Um, two thousand two is when they put the first one in. All the yellow spots are existing ones. All the orange ones are. Proposed or currently under construction. So I stopped counting fifty at the existing and I think I got to about forty something at the proposed. So if they were having that much trouble, I don't think they would be going at the rate at which they are.
I I would also add to that as far as the learning curve goes, if we change a two way stop to a four way stop without. Just putting a stop sign in, I feel like that from a safety perspective is going to be uh pretty disastrous. I know when they put one in from. On Raleigh in Norway, the learning curve for people to see the second stop sign was pretty. Almost disastrous several times, just people driving to and from schools and things like that, that they just weren't used to it and. I don't wanna tell how many times I might have run it, but it wasn't zero.
How many, Tim?
I mean, there there is, there is all kinds of, you go to the federal highway, there's other YouTube videos. About it. I mean, yeah, there's, there's a lot of that out there on on how to navigate through them.
So can you drive a house through them or not? I'm just wondering.
I. I I found some pictures of them partway through them. I did not see a video of them going through it, nor have I talked to anybody that has taken a house through.
Just with that housing development that's out there. Take into consideration. Typically, those house movers, they have, they have a steerable axle for the back, so I don't see that being an issue whatsoever.
Okay, I I don't know. I never moved a house.
He said he talked to Pat, Pat says he can do it, he can do it.
Okay.
Uh, he said he would avoid it as much as he could.
Yeah, that's what, that's the answer I remember hearing.
He he would avoid every lighted intersection that he could also. Oh, I mean, he'll go out of his way to avoid the light intersection. I mean, he won't, he mentioned that that. Even Minnesota and Sanbor- or Minnesota and the bypass now, he avoids because there's a light on it.
And they got Indian Village Road they could.
Yeah. That one too, and then uh then he said about the other direction, then he got across the railroad, he didn't know if he'd fit through the railroad part.
Jeff, you also brought up at the uh last week is the amount of time that you wait or the the time to get through an intersection with the different types. And actually, the roundabout, believe it or not, even though you're at a lot slower uh speed. You get through the intersection so much faster.
Correct, correct.
And and the key to it is is slowing down.
Right, right. So yeah, your 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 wait time and the time with that with the roundabout is. Is quicker through it and and yeah, you're slowing down, you're going through it. Um, I know there's a MythBuster episode out there that evaluated all of it that proved that the roundabout was the. The most efficient for flowing flowing traffic.
And the difference is five hundred thousand dollars essentially? Yeah.
Yeah, and and we gotta look at that a little bit. It's, that's not quite a. Apples to apples comparison, because you look at the drawing right there, you look how far we have to go. East, west, south to make those connections on roads that all have to get improved. That if we weren't doing the roundabout, obviously, our scope of the project is not to go that far east, west or south. So, you know, there's, there's some of that with that cost ex- extra cost that um. Have down in the future anyways, right?
But for budget purposes, yes, but you're also doing a bigger project, cause you're doing more streets, more water and.
Feet more. And and these matching points, we're, we're not through final design. Maybe we'll be able to scale those back a little bit. When we get all that final line work and stuff from H D R, but yeah, we would be. Increasing the project significantly to pick up those lengths so that we can match back in.
Jeff, and you also mentioned like going north, we're going to be, we already got that street project. So that cost would would be, but the other two going east and going south, the likelihood of us as a city. Having to improve this, and Joe, you can hop in, is very likely in the near future, so that you would have that cost anyway.
Right. At least in the next twenty five to thirty year that we would look at for the life cycle of this, so yeah.
I did have a, it did occur to me, is like, is any of this in the county? I feel like I remember hearing that half of Omen is in the county. Is that not true?
I don't think on this location.
Yeah, um, so going to the north, um, the property on the west side is in the county. Up until the apartments, um, and then the apartments are in the city where there's, or it looks like a pasture or a field. Um, that's in the county.
But in terms of ownership of the road, it is all city road.
No, it's, there's, there's some shared jurisdiction. Yeah, so the city right now is maintaining those roads. Um, we're, we've been actively talking with the county about some of these situations and um. Rectifying those who are not sharing anymore and have an agreement as far as who takes care of what. So the decision we make tonight is just how we're gonna do the twenty third to Kemper, if that gets approved in the budget, right?
No, the decision tonight is which type of intersection so they can finalize the design.
Correct.
Whether what, roundabouts or stop signs, basically.
If we decide roundabout, does the county have any jurisdiction to uh say yes or no? Could they stop the roundabout?
I don't know if the county would be mad at us improving the road, but maybe.
I I would think it's something that we'd have to work cooperatively with the county for, given that they still have control over. That portion of the road.
Okay.
Is this, are you looking for um motion or?
For sure, yeah, I wanna make sure everyone is done up here before we have any audience members. Should we mo- we need a motion on this, correct?
Let's listen what the people out there have to say first.
Let's do a motion in a second for whatever direction, so then the audience can come up and we could do it. So, do we have a motion for whoever wants to make this?
Make a motion to proceed with the roundabout.
Okay, we have a motion to proceed with the ma- roundabout in a second. Okay, any further discussion from the council before we open it up to the audience? Okay, would anyone in the audience like to discuss the roundabout? Hope we got a couple.
Kelly Path, I sent you all an email this afternoon and at that time I. First of all, roundabouts are safe. They're the safest thing you're gonna have. I just don't think this is the place for a roundabout. I'd like to see the money spent somewhere else. I guess I suggested stoplights, but I never thought about the house moving, so I would definitely be in favor of forced stop signs. Uh, something needs to be done, or I think Jeff could probably. Uh, attest to this, when you're coming through that intersection and you look east in the morning, you can't see anything, so. Something needs to be done to make the traffic come to a stop and slow down in that area. When they redid the lift station, that was quiet at the neighborhood down for a month. So anyway, that's my opinion. I'd rather see the stop signs. I guess this is a different subject. I'm not sure why we're do- redoing the road. Or why the what, the sidewalk couldn't be on on the west side.
The west side, I think, is county. Yeah, west side's county.
But you could buy the land from Music and put the sidewalk there.
That's, that sounds like an option, yes. I don't know if it's something everyone would agree with, but.
Well, you're gonna have to buy road uh to move the road over, aren't you? You're gonna have to buy land.
I don't know if we, we, I don't think so, cause there's an easement that the city has.
How are you gonna get an eight foot sidewalk in there?
Well, where the um, on the east side, the sidewalk would go, on the west side, are you talking about the east or the west?
East side is where you're gonna put the sidewalk, right?
So, so we, city ordinance states that we, once there's curb and gutter, they have to have a sidewalk, is that correct?
So there's, and Jeff, can you correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there's a sixty six foot right away through that area? Um, so we'd follow any other city street like we do now as far as if you can.
Be the, the, from the front of the house or the edge of a house, what would be the distance to the sidewalk?
So from the front of a house?
Those would be on the side.
From the side of the house to the road to Omen.
Yes.
Side yard setback, uh, in that area is probably three feet from overhang, I believe.
From the, from the overhang to?
Correct, corner lot, corner lot would be twenty five feet.
Okay.
Or twenty.
Is that to the sidewalk or the property line? Sorry, this is complicated planning stuff. That's a tough question, Kelly.
You don't have to answer that tonight.
And and part of Kelly, what we went through last week is the fact that, just like you brought up, that's a dangerous intersection, obviously. So at a minimum, we were gonna have to add a third lane, like a turning lane and widen it out anyway, and and we went through that cost last. Last week also.
Even necessary.
Yeah, according to the traffic study, but that's what we're going by, and I know. Living there sixty years or whatever, but but anyway, that was the information that we we got from the traffic.
If you look at the traffic, I think from seven AM to nine AM in the morning. Is a majority of your traffic on that intersection. The rest of the time, it probably flows very well. So, and then uh, so you're not gonna assess the homeowners for curb and gutter?
That would be a decision we would have to decide.
If you decide not to, could you go back about thirty five? Cause we gotta assess for Cemetery Road.
Yeah.
When they rebuild it, so with the interest, I think that's a pretty good. Nice try.
Alright, thanks, Kelly.
Side yard corner lot is twenty feet.
Twenty, twenty feet. Okay, next.
Hi, my name is Susan Bennett and I drive that road every chance I get. And um. If you've ever driven thirty four and thirty seven, um, highway thirty four and thirty seven. Three kids were killed in an accident just not that long ago. There's this huge stop sign with lights all around it. What's wrong with slowing down the people we've got? There's all kinds of elderly people that live out in um the hu- the apartments and the housing and. And most of the trucks are going the other direction. I just think that five hundred thousand dollars for a roundabout in that area is inappropriate. Um, you're right, you want people to slow down, you want people to be safe, you want people to. Be safe and slow down. Well, it doesn't take a roundabout to do that. It takes. A little education and shocking them with a big old sign that said, slow down. Or put a nice little policeman out there a couple of times a week and see if you don't nab somebody speeding through there. And pretty soon they'll slow down just plenty. If it costs them, they'll slow down plenty. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to talk about roundabouts?
My name is Derek Gross. I live Pebble Beach Road, right on that corner, basically. Um, just back from there. Um, I don't think it's. I can s- I can see the argument for traffic, but I only see the argument for traffic. For pedestrians, you know, we're we're looking at adding a sidewalk there. That's great, but um adding this roundabout is kind of gonna be counteractive to that. Um. I wanna back up a little bit, so that um twenty fifty projection on traffic is, what is that based on? I never did see that. I mean, are we assuming that like a lot more people are gonna build out there or?
Jeff, do you wanna answer that? Are the, are the areas highlighted in the report?
Yes, yeah. I'm sure it uses some general production goals, but it included um all of the Salt Lake development. Um, I believe there's another residential development that got approved for a tip. It hasn't moved forward, I don't think at this point. Right across from uh Musics. And then right at the intersection, the northwest corner, the intersection of uh twenty third Omen, that entire here uh Hayfield area. Was considered as residential development. Um, I don't know if there's any plans for any of those other one, for that third one, uh but obviously it's in a a primary area, you would see the growth. And then from there, I'm su- sure it's using their, their, H D R uses general growth model that they probably use for the traffic study throughout the entire city.
Yep, so they only looked at areas that were identified as future development, um not areas that say are existing. Um, hayland or field that still could be developed. They did not include those areas, only the areas that have been identified so far as uh future development.
Okay, I mean, a big chunk of that looked like it was right by the train track, so I don't know how likely that is, but um. I guess my, like I said, my main argument is gonna be that it's, you know, uh, not as, not as good for pedestrians. I mean, a normal intersection is a lot more predictable. Roundabout, most of those images, those roundabouts, almost, I think maybe half of them had actual crosswalks, you know, most of them were like busier. Intersections, you know, where they're just trying to, you know, improve the traffic flow. And it looks like it works great for that. Um, now that one was on S D S U's campus where most people are very aware that there's pedestrians there. Um, out here in twenty third Omen, it's not real common, you have pedestrians, but I think when we make that connect to the bike path and all that. I think a lot more people will start walking out there on the path, rather than like what they do now, which is usually just walk through the ditch. Because that's the safest thing to do, really. Um, so like on roundabout, you know, nobody, nobody's gonna use a blinker. It's it's somewhat predictable where traffic's gonna go, but nobody's using a blinker. Nobody's gonna stop. Um, and there's already a lot of people that drive pretty recklessly, and maybe we can mitigate that a little bit with speed limit changes and things, so maybe it. Won't be as much of an issue as I'm imagining, but um, you know, you can hear it all the time where people are just hitting the gas, burning out, whatever around that. They're gonna do the same thing around that roundabout. I mean, so you basically gotta wait for that intersection to be completely clear before you're gonna feel safe crossing it. Um, you know, one argument was made about um, you know, conflict zones in that roundabout. I would argue it's basically the same. I mean, you almost gotta assume someone's gonna do something stupid, like go straight over the middle. Um, you know, you gotta, you gotta be aware. I mean, better safe than sorry. So I think you still gotta look pretty much all directions. Um, and you can kinda cross one, you know, one chunk of that at a time, but. Um, you know, if I'm older, disabled, have little kids with me, there's no way I'm gonna stop on that median and feel safe. You know, then you got traffic kinda going all around you. I mean, literally like, you know, coming this way, coming back that way and coming still around, so you got three directions coming. directions coming, and you're kinda right there in the middle. It's, it, it just doesn't feel very safe sometimes. Then a couple other points, um, a little more minor, um, just wanna make sure emergency vehicles and through that area were considered. I mean, that's, you know, rather than be able to go straight through the intersection with their lights going, they gotta, gotta slow down and hit that roundabout. Um, snow removal was a one, another one. I don't know how easy it is, but that intersection definitely drifts. Um, I don't know what kind of impact that would have. And then, my other concern, obviously, since I live right there, is just, um, you know, my property, you know, where that's gonna end up. That picture wasn't to scale, I know, but, you know, the way it was drawn is literally right in the middle of the ditch, right on the side of my house there, so.
Are you the corner house?
So I'm.
Right here.
Yeah.
Yep, so, I mean, I know this probably isn't the scale, I might scoot over this way just because, you know, this is, maybe this is more eas, you know, easier to go over this way with it, since there are no buildings here, but.
So I mean, that'll be a concern for me, obviously, but, um, yeah. Like I said, I, 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 I get the argument from a traffic perspective, but I just wanna make sure the pedestrian stuff is considered too. You know, I, I think it's great that we're adding sidewalk there, um, but it might kinda be counterproductive, you know, switching this to a roundabout at the same time.
So I, I just wanna just respond to you real quick, because your, I, I said from the beginning, your letter was one of the most compelling arguments that I received, and I really appreciated. It's the reason that I asked about the pedestrians, and it happens, I have a niece visiting from Anchorage right now, and she has seven roundabouts right by her house. So I, we were having lunch today, and I said, "Tell me about pedestrians." And she said, "It's extremely safe," and I think it's because, and it's why I asked Jeff, Jeff to explain that, that those pedestrian crossings will be moved back away from, they won't ever be caught in the middle. They'll, they'll actually be off to the side. And the other part that I thought that, I was really, you brought some really good points up, so I appreciate that. Um, but she lives in Anchorage, and so, you know, they have a lot of snow, and they don't salt their roads, and so she brought that up too, um, and said that really they don't, that, that snow removal isn't an issue, and, and it's one of those things that, um, they've, they've just learned to do, and she feels like they're so much safer. She said, actually, her husband's a physician, and he was driving, and he kind of started to slip, and, because they didn't, I, they didn't salt. And, but the good thing about the roundabout was that he just was kind of, was stopped by that round center part. So there's far less damage that I think is done. Um, but I just, I commend you for your invol, your willingness to stick your neck out and ask the questions, because I think that's what we needed. I, you made me think. You made me ask questions that I maybe wouldn't have thought of before. So hopefully this puts your mind at least a little bit at ease.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest, I am a little bit indifferent. Um, you know, the snap reaction is to hate it. Um, I could've made myself think through that a little bit, too. Uh, I, I, if we do go forward with the roundabout, I think something else needs to be done to slow traffic down coming into it. Um, not just signs at the roundabout, but maybe reduce the speed limit coming into it from all directions. Um, otherwise, people will just right through it.
Aren't you so excited about the sidewalks?
Yes.
Yeah, I know, good news, right?
I mean, assuming I don't have to pay for two.
Yeah. We're gonna work on that.
Otherwise, I can go without it.
Yes. Okay.
Alright.
Thank you. Do you wanna?
Yeah. Jacob Sonny, um, I just wanted to ease your mind a little bit. We will not be putting the road through your living room. Um, this, this image is shifted about thirteen feet east of where it's actually at. That's just how it gets brought into Google, or stuff isn't perfect when you do that. So, um, we would stay within the city right-of-way. Um, and again, said that, that, uh, setback for side yard was twenty feet, Joe, fifteen, twenty? Um, so it'd be roughly, um, well, you'd have to fit the sidewalk in there as well, so we'll be, uh, plenty far away from that. Um, just a little bit of information regarding, um, safety, pedestrian safety in particular. Um, the state of Minnesota has put in four hundred and fifty roundabouts since nineteen ninety-five. Um, and it snows there, so I, I think they probably understand how to manage during snow removal, but, um, they, they listed a seventy percent decrease in fatal and serious injury crashes for pedestrians, um, as opposed to traditional intersections, and then a fifteen percent decrease in total pedestrian bike and pedestrian crashes through roundabouts. So, um, I just wanted to give that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else out there in the audience that'd like to discuss this?
Hi, Troy Hall Lloyd. I'd just like to say I'm in total support of it. I think it's a great spot to do with the first one. Be a good learning spot. You're not going to, you know, you're not gonna put it on the busiest intersection in town. People can go out there, they can figure out how the sidewalks work, how to get across it with a bike. Um, and it's great that you're gonna get rid of the sidewalks to know where that are along Omen, so I just wanna say I'm a hundred percent for it.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to discuss this? Okay. Without anything further, we'll go ahead and vote.
I would like to make one more comment, Mayor, if I could, please. Um, I honestly look at this as, as an extension of our bike path, uh, with, um, from Kemper to Twenty-third, and we have all sat here and talked about how danger, how dangerous it is out there. And, and we have discussed before, I see little boys and little girls riding their bikes right in the middle of the road because there's no apron, and there's, and it's just dangerous. And, and so for us to come together and try to, to get this project completed is, is very exciting, uh, because it does get used a lot, and it, and it, we continue to put more housing out there and, and, um, and families. Uh, so in reality, in, in saying that, I, I would like us to consider actually paying for what I would consider the bike path. And I know I may not get total support on that, but I'm at least gonna throw it out there for a discussion.
I agree with that. I, um, we've had this discussion previously along that same area, and we agreed that that was bike path, and that the homeowners should not be responsible for paying for that or doing the snow removal, and I think this is a continuation of that bike path that heads, um, north out towards the lake. So I would be in agreement with that, Jeff.
So are you mending your motion to that?
This is just for the intersection.
Just for, okay, just making sure.
Um, I think that if we're assessing part of other parts of the city sidewalk, I think that this part should, if it's a wider sidewalk, the part that is not a normal sidewalk width should be assessed to the individual, if that makes sense. And so, the city should pay for the wider, the widening of the sidewalk, but not necessarily all of the cost.
How wide would the sidewalk, would it be a five foot, or is this a ten foot, Joe?
This would be an eight foot.
And then normal's five?
Correct.
So Tim's suggestion is the city pays for the three foot difference? Okay, just clearing it up.
And that is what we showed in the budget options that we showed for the city cost to the general fund for sidewalk, paying the difference between a traditional sidewalk and the bike path.
So we extended the bike path sidewalk from Lakeview going south, uh, the first road. Who, what'd we do there for cost?
That was before me.
Was it?
Yeah.
No, no, we just did this a few years ago.
Yeah, we did.
Really? From Kemper to the lake?
No, no, from Lakeview Golf Course entrance.
Yeah.
Going south, not very long.
Yeah, I, I wasn't the engineer in that project. Um, I, I don't remember how it got assessed. I do feel like there was some, some grant dollars that came with that project. Um, I know it, it came out of our office, but I, I wasn't into the details, but I, I can maybe see if I can find some of that. I don't know if I would have the special assessment side of it, but, um, I, I do think it, it, I feel like it got some, it received some DOT.
It's not put in like a sidewalk. It's up and down. It's put in like a bike path.
Yeah, yep, and it, it goes, continues north to the South Harmon, or not, Indian Village Road as well, right?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a sidewalk there by, I don't know, the street, by Doug Miller's house.
Yep, yep.
I mean, it looks like a sidewalk.
Yeah, it's, it's been quite a number of years ago, because I think Sam Hohn did it in our office, and he's been in Florida for, oh, seven, eight years, ten years. So, but I, I can see if I can find something on that. Uh, I, I mean, I know we did it out of our office, I just wasn't involved.
I, I'm sure we could look too back in history to see what was done.
But, and that is the project, we'll be tying into that at Kemper, that, that bike path.
So, just a point here, at least for tonight's discussion. I mean, whether you do it as an assessment project or not, council can finalize that as part of your budget process, but at least knowing which intersection that they're designing to, and going to bid with, would, is what they need direction on for tonight.
There's one question. What is gonna be the elevation of the sidewalk or bike path, whatever you wanna call it? Is it gonna be road level or down in the ditch, or?
I think Mr. Sonny could answer that.
Uh, Jacob Sonny, uh, the section is gonna be an urban section. Right now, it's a rural section with deep ditches, and the street itself is relatively elevated. Um, we've estimated approximately two to three feet of cut through the whole street section throughout the project. So it'll be more of an urban section, like you'd see in the middle of town, where it's a nice gradual slope down to the back of curb, um, and then a curb and other street. It, it should be a nice gradual slope from the property line out to the back of curb. Um, so right now, you've got really deep ditch sections. We'd be filling ditches and cutting roadway down, um, so it.
So you will be leveling out the road.
Yeah. It will look more like a traditional city street does with curb and gutter.
Yep.
And, and we've always had some water out in that area, and, and continuing that bike path down, that really was part of the project, Joe, of getting rid of all that surface water out there. Remember that? That, that wasn't that long ago, from, from where the golf course entrance is to the south of Kemper, and then we put storm sewers right in the middle of the road. And, and so then that would continue then coming this way, which would, I think, take care of a lot of problems.
That's correct. There's a twenty-four inch, uh, concrete pipe, uh, between Torrey Pines and Country Drive, I believe. Uh, we'll be tying onto that storm sewer and continuing that to the south about six hundred feet.
And then it goes to where?
That all goes north to the lake. The, the storm pipe goes north.
It's already gone there. That water already flows that direction.
I just wanna make a comment about, um, yeah, we did. You know, I, I, it's not a, uh, a very good comparison, but I, I've done a little driving here lately, and I go through the intersection by Walmart out there, and since Votec has started, it is amazing how many of those kids ride bike and cross that highway. And I have yet to hear of an accident. Now, I believe they do have a button to push that allows them to cross, but there's a lot of kids. I think they live in those apartments west of Menards that travel on bike to school, and it, I mean, it is really amazing. If you go by there at seven forty-five in the morning, there's a lot of bikes, and they safely do it. I will support the project to push it to bid state and make a decision then.
Um, I also in support of a roundabout. I do want to get the county, uh, if they have any authority. I would like their consent to build the roundabout before we go through the cost of design and all of those things, only for them to then pull, pull up a roadblock. I'd prefer to have that beforehand if possible.
I have received a comment, uh, maybe this would be for you, Jeff, from someone, um, in the community, and they said that one of the concerns that they have is people knowing who has the right-of-way on a, on a roundabout. Is that, um, marked, or, you know, it's one of those things. I just wanted that they're, they said I've navigated these in Minnesota, and they're dangerous.
So pedestrians have the right-of-way first, they're crossing. Um, the ones in the roundabout have the right-of-way, so you're waiting to get your, your opening.
Okay.
For.
And typically, that's indicated by a yield sign.
Right, yep, yep.
And I would expect that if you move forward with a roundabout, before that would be, that project would be completed, we're gonna have to do some public information, posting, videos, um, things like that, just to help people navigate that for the first time.
Jacob Sonny.
I don't know if it'll be as good as the SDSU video, but we would try.
Uh, actually, your city staff, Josh Harvey, I believe, shared something really nice on Facebook. Uh, you generally, again, uh, you yield to pedestrians first, um, but then you generally yield to the vehicles on your left. So you're just watching to your left until you exit.
Okay, alright. Any more questions about a roundabout? I thought everyone loved roundabouts, but, okay. Alright, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries to proceed with designing the roundabout. Okay. Action approved agreements A twenty twenty-five dash fifty-five easements for Lake Shore Sanitary Sewer as shown on the agenda. Are we doing them both at the same time? Mr. Johnson, is that okay, or do they have to be separate?
I, I would do them separately.
Okay, we will do them separate. So let's start with the first one for J T Z properties.
Move to approve A.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, and then item B as shown on the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
We got a motion, the second. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Action approved agreement A twenty twenty-five dash fifty-six design, build, and construction phase services for Water Department Maintenance Facility Project twenty twenty-six dash zero-one with Silverella Design, Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor Council, uh, the proposed agreement will provide design, bidding, construction phase, professional services for a new water distribution building at the groundwater storage tank, uh, site south of town on Highway thirty-seven. Uh, the new building will allow staff easy access to the groundwater storage and pumping facility, uh, which is the new distribution point for the city. New building will include two offices, a break room slash conference room, shop space to accommodate our equipment, cold storage, and a location to store pipe material. Uh, the old building at the previous water treatment plant site will be repurposed for a city use to be determined. Um, staff does recommend city council approval, the attached agreement from Silverella Design for a lump sum fee of one hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred dollars, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Joe, what kind of structure are we building? A steel building, a precast building?
Looking at a metal building. I think with an option for precast if it was cheaper.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. McConnell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goldhammer. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Action approved resolution R twenty twenty-five dash fifty-nine levying business improvement district number three special assessments for two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-six. Ms. Beck.
Okay, this resolution is for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, uh, bid number three assessments for the Main Street properties, and this is the eighth year of these assessments.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Darks, second by Mr. Sabres. Further discussion?
So it doesn't include all businesses, it's just voluntary?
It's the boundaries as they were originally established, so we can't modify which properties were included since the time that it was implemented.
Can anyone modify it? Sorry, I'm just, that's his personal question.
Not, no, not until it's terminated.
Okay. Yeah, any further questions? Anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Hearing an action to approve resolution R twenty twenty-five dash sixty-three collection of, oops, sorry, is that the one I just read? No, never mind. Hearing an action to approve resolution R twenty twenty-five dash sixty-three collection of special assessment role for two thousand twenty-four miscellaneous concrete projects, two thousand twenty-four construction projects, and two thousand twenty-four nuisance abatements. That's you? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Joel Damon. Um, good evening, uh, Mayor and members of the council. At this time, we're holding a public hearing on the work that was completed last year's for, um, miscellaneous projects and nuisance properties. Notices were sent out to all affected property owners, um, for miscellaneous concrete projects, Sam Street, South Miller Street, or for nuisance abatements, which were for mowing and snow removal incidents. If approved, starting tomorrow, the property owners will have thirty days interest-free to pay their assessment amount. The last day of no interest is October fifteenth, twenty twenty- The last day of no interest is October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, the first day of interest is October sixteenth, twenty tw- or, sorry. Yes. Last, that's the same sentence. The finance office will be sending notices with yearly breakdowns that will show the property tax statements with additional information. The interest rate is set at eight percent. If the property owner lets the assessment go onto their taxes, the miscellaneous concrete projects will be a five-year repayment plan. The paving and overlay projects on Sam Street and South Miller Street will be a ten-year repayment plan. And the nuisance abatements are a one-year repayment plan. They will be taken out of the first half of the property taxes in twenty twenty-six. Um, I do have one correction on the assessment role, number twenty twenty-five dash forty-four-ten. The property owner is named Cynthia Cordiero, um, not Cynthia Caldera, and it will need to be adjusted to reflect that. Does anybody have any questions on their assessments or questions from the council?
I don't see anyone from the audience coming forth.
Alright, so then we can move into the resolution with the change I stated on the rule. And that is up to you guys, if you're gonna approve that.
I'll move to approve with the, uh, stated change.
Thank you, motion in a second, any further discussion? Would anyone else in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, action approved resolution R twenty twenty-five dash sixty-five, surplus and auction of trailer and house at, in the eleven hundred and twelve hundred block of East First Avenue, Mr. Johnson.
Alright, so we've done several of these, uh, surplus and auctions now for the trailer court in the eleven hundred and twelve hundred block of East First. This one should be the last. Um, this would be for the trailer on lot thirty-eight and the home, uh, or residence at twelve nineteen East First Avenue. Um, I believe that the other house, uh, that was just to the west of that has already been torn down, so. Um, it would be those two items, um. Nothing else should be coming up for auction after this, um, everything else would be getting cleared out, um, and destroyed based off of other approvals that council's done up to this point. The date of the auction would be set for October eighth at ten AM at the site. And with that, we can open it to questions.
Thank you. And this will be the last time we have to do anything for this mobile home estate?
You've done a great job.
Thank you.
I know, I know I have a question, I wanna make a comment and, uh, publicly thank the mayor for ramrodding this project. I know he helped some people find homes and, uh, made sure they're ready for auction and even played the auctioneer, I guess. And, uh, I just wanna thank him, cause it, it, to me, it is gonna be a huge improvement for our community.
Yeah, a couple of people got, uh, you know, I said thanks to Terry in the pa- uh, paper, Terry Sabres for, cause quite a few of those people moved to the new income-based apartment, so that's really nice. They upgraded their situation, a couple of people bought the trailers to live in them and now they're homeowners and. It was good all around, I know it was a little shaky at the beginning, but I'm happy it's done and I'm happy nothing bad happened, so.
I know that you've invested a lot of time in this and I think, you know, kudos to you, congratulations on getting this done.
Appreciate it, thank you. Okay.
I will move to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And a second, further discussion?
Uh, I did have, can you show the picture of the inside? I think that it's just of note that.
The nice one?
One of these are fairly.
The nicest one?
Um, and so, not, and so.
Yeah, there's a very nice one coming up for auction, we save the best for last. It's, I think it's a three bedroom, one and a half bath, all remodeled, look at that kitchen. Screw, yeah, look at. No, it's, it's a really nice one.
So.
If my HOA didn't allow it, it'd be sitting next to my lot.
That was a, that was a joke for all his neighbors, um. And so, I just, it's, if you've come to previous auctions and you were like, this one wasn't for me, this one could be.
Yeah, this is a really nice trailer. Okay. Anyone else in the audience like to discuss this before we vote? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, hearing an action to approve resolution R twenty twenty-five dash sixty-six, tax levies to be certified to county auditor, Ms. Beth.
We received final growth numbers from the county late on Friday, so there are new sheets sitting in front of you. The one in the book has been updated. The CPI this year is two point nine percent, the growth ended up being one point five two percent. So the amount to be certified is seven million, forty-one thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars.
Thank you. Okay.
So Stephanie, is that what you were showing on the last page of the budget there, that, that?
Correct.
That was the difference then of?
Yep, that would be adding the growth to the property taxes, so that's revenue I don't currently have included in the budget for twenty twenty-six, so it's new revenue.
Okay, thank you. That's good.
Okay, looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Gold, second by Mr. McArdle, further discussion? What do you want in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries, action approved resolution R twenty twenty-five dash sixty-seven, a resolution giving approval to certain sewer facility improvements as shown on the agenda. Ms. Owen.
Thankfully you didn't have to read through that long title.
Made that clear earlier this morning.
Unfortunately, we do have to print it as is just because this comes, comes from our bond council. This resolution is the last step needed for us to finalize one of our fi- our SRF loans with the state of South Dakota for the wastewater amendment. Phase two, I'm gonna pull this up, sorry. So this project is for the loan that's in the amount of five million dollars over thirty years. Um, we have already implemented the surcharge for this project on a previous resolution, so this bond resolution is just the last thing we need. So they can close the financing on that project, uh, we recommend approval of the resolution as shown.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer, second by Mr. Barrington, further discussion? What do you want in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries, action approved resolution R twenty twenty-five dash sixty-eight, a resolution amending the two thousand twenty-five compensation plan for the city of Mitchell, Ms. Owen.
These are really just administrative changes, we have some part-time, uh, bus driver positions that we are changing into van driver positions. The van driver positions are paid at a lower rate of pay because they aren't required to have a C D L. We used to have two part-time bus drivers that qualified for South Dakota retirement, Jessica's requesting that we move one of those into a van driver position. So there isn't a budget impact, if anything, it's gonna be less, uh, funds spent for those positions. But it gives the authority for those positions to be hired and to be paid on the South Dakota retirement system. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? What do you want in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries, that is it, we are adjourned.